He's got another board meeting that is, he's going to be attending for work. All right, yeah. Call the meeting door, please stand.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Feels good to be able to gather in a meeting for the first time in four months. Tonight, we have a special meeting so that it's a combination of discussion and action. Unlike our previous eight meetings where we've conducted them almost exclusively by Zoom, this one is kind of a combination. And so we have board members and administration. Hopefully, we have the technology down pat and that the sound is good for the experience and those people who are following us on YouTube. All right, first up then is the COVID-19 response update, which we've been getting at every meeting for the last eight meetings. Go ahead. Yep, so I'll go ahead and give the update. I just want to verify those people that are on the screen, Dave or Aaron, is, can you hear me okay? Thumbs up? Okay, perfect. So, you know, we're going to be talking obviously about the fall 2020 reopening plan. And so a lot of the COVID update, meeting update items are going to be covered in that. But a couple of things I wanted to touch base on, we did have a call with public health this morning. We have one every Monday morning with St. Croix County Public Health. As of this morning, there were 348 cases in St. Croix County, of which 211 have recovered. There's 137 active cases, there's been two deaths. You know, we spent some time kind of talking about, you know, data to look at and different data points and things like that. That's an ongoing discussion with the, with public health and also with state as to what makes the most sense when we're looking at data for trying to make sure that we have things that pertain to the Hudson School District and to our community. Just an update related to masks for summer school and SAC. I guess what I can do is, is just kind of tell you, I know we changed and we, we did require masks at SAC, at school age care and at summer school starting today and reader elite. For the most part, I think it, it's gone pretty well. I don't know if Dave or Tracy, if you have anything you want to comment about, about that at all?
Sure, I'll, I can jump in there. So from the summer school perspective, as Nick said, it went very well. I was down at Willow River this morning observing and helping out. There were only two students who did not have masks and we had masks on hand and offered them and, and the students were fine. There were similar reactions at EP Rock and at the middle school. Checked in with principals and everything seemed to go well. Obviously, it was a quick turnaround, so not everyone was up to speed on the communication, but seemed to understand. And I will say from a teacher perspective, it was very much appreciated when I was walking through the halls chatting with teachers.
I would concur, school age care had the same experience this morning. We had just a couple of kids without masks or families who chose to withdraw. So there was, I think, maybe two families who made that decision based on the change in requirement. But overall, it was an easy transition. We had some kids who were using masks prior and, I mean, they had gym activities, continued to wear their mask through gym activities. There's plenty of opportunity throughout the day for kids to take a break from their mask if they need to. So when they're outside and physically distanced or some of their inside activities, depending on what they are. So relatively easy day.
I should mention too, Tracy reminded me, there was one family at least that decided to withdraw from summer school based on a decision.
All right, thanks. Also, as I kind of go around my list before we get into the plan, we are continuing to work with, with public health, you know, on a regular basis like I talked about. And again, the biggest thing is, is looking at the data points and that's going to be meaningful for a district. Also, one of the things that is happening is I am working with other superintents in the area. So, you know, sometimes people ask, do you know what other districts are recommending or what they're doing? We primarily focus on districts on this side of the river because you have different state laws that impact school openings and things like that. So at least, you know, when, when we sent out some texts to kind of, kind of go through what, I mean, again, these aren't necessarily what districts are doing. This is what the administration would be recommending to the board, kind of their plan opening, you know, as we went through that. And, you know, the two big questions people are asking is, what's your plan for coming back? You know, are you going to bring everybody back? Are you coming full time, not full time? And, you know, are you going to require a mask, not require a mask? And, you know, Richmond said they're planning on bringing everybody back full time. At least that recommendation with mask required, St. Croix Falls currently planning on. And again, these are all as of right now because these things can change at any point. It's a pretty fluid situation. St. Croix Falls anticipates bringing 100% of the kids back, required mask grades five through 12, and then to be determined in grade K4. St. Croix Central, 100% back with mask strongly encouraged. Baldwin Woodville, planning to go back at 100% with social distancing and cohorts where possible, probably only recommend mask. River Falls is, they have a couple of different options. You know, it, it could be a hybrid, which brings back only some of their kids. But mask for everyone when they do return. Prescott Elementary through grade five, when outside their cohort, they'd recommend ma, or they're going to require a mask. Middle school have masks more often, high school nearly all day. Amory requiring mask for staff, mask for students is on the agenda for tonight, so they'll make a decision that way. And looking at bringing all kids back. Ellsworth is looking at bringing 100% of their kids back, 100% of the time. Summer school have masks whenever six feet is, they can't be six feet apart. And then Osceola, as of today, again, mandatory on buses for masks, staff mandatory when social distancing is not an option. Students will end up being strongly recommended. As of today, they're planning on five days a week, K, 4K to 12. So it just gives you a little bit of background. Again, these are, I think the thing is, we get ready to head into talking about the plan is it's a fluid situation, these plans. Although we're trying to give people as much advance notice as we can as we talk about what the recommendations are, we know that they're constantly changing. And so, so it's kind of the, you know, those are kind of the big, big ticket items, at least, you know, when we're thinking about comparing school districts. Is everybody coming back? And if they are coming back, are you planning on requiring, you know, requiring the mask? And so, you know, so we're all working together. We're trying to understand, you know, what each is doing. We're also trying to understand the uniquenesses of, of each community and, and, and what that looks like. So with that, that's kind of the COVID response update to this point. We're continuing to have meetings. We're involving quite a few staff in those meetings and Dave will be talking a little bit more about that when we're talking about our plan as it relates to instructional staff and things like that. And I'll be talking about it with some of the operational sides of things as we get into the fall reopening plan. So any questions up to this point about kind of a COVID update?
Any questions from board members just as, as to the update? Very similar to the updates we've received prior to this, but constantly evolving. Yes?
Mr. President, I'm curious, has the question come up, what constitutes a mask? Like when we're, you know, like for summer school when we're requiring masks, has that come up? And then do we have, do staff, are they equipped? Like, do we have enough of a definition that people are comfortable with it?
Yeah, so we, so we've, we've basically said mask or face coverings. It could be a shield if a mask is not able to be worn for a variety of reasons. And so, but that's, that's kind of the, the direction we're going with it. Other questions?
I had one question because it's, it's going to be touched upon again, I know, when we talk about the plan to reopen. But obviously, since our last meeting, there was the administration decision to go to mandatory masks instead of recommended. And I was just curious, gave a report on the compliance today, the fact that most everyone showed up with masks. There's one or two exceptions. How many were wearing masks, both teachers and students, prior to the change in the policy? Based on, you know, the first two weeks of summer school?
Dave, I, you and Tracy may have a better handle on that than I would.
Yeah, so two things. So from the staff perspective, it was the vast majority, other than in situations where it wasn't feasible. But for the most part, staff members were wearing masks. I'd say, I'd say 80% plus of staff members. With students, it was much less than that, less than 50% at the elementary level. I, I was never in the middle school during a time when I would, when I would see a lot of kids out. But what I heard from those that were, it was about the same. So greater percentage with staff, less with students.
Same with school age care. Staff were required depending on their ability to physically distance. But as far as kids, it kind of started out, there were more kids coming. And then I think just because of the number of kids that were not wearing them, then they were less likely to be wearing them.
Thank you for that, answering that question. Any other questions then on the update? Seeing none, let's move on then to the action item, which is acting on the recommended plan. And Nick, I know it's a 24, 25 page document. So I don't know if you have it split up as to who's going to be running through it?
So I will take the lead on this and then there'll be different folks that will be chiming in from the cabinet team on different parts of the plan. As, as you know, you know, page two, the kind of my message to the, to the group related to this plan is that, and I can't stress this enough, that this, this is the recommended plan as of, as of today. And things change, you know, new information comes out, the situation changes. But, you know, it, it is, as of right now, this is the administration's recommendation for what it would look like on September 1st, should we be able to, you know, move forward with it. I think the other thing people need to understand is this, this is basically kind of the executive summary of all the different planning that we have going on. There are hundreds of pages of supporting documents and other work groups and things like that that are, that are being refined. And, and so this is meant to be more of a higher level item. There's a lot of internal documents we're working on. And then I think the other piece I really want to make sure that people understand is we talk a lot about mitigating risk versus creating safe environments. And, and the reason we do that is, you know, as I talk about, the word safe may suggest that we can provide a COVID-free environment and we just can't. We can't guarantee that. And, or, you know, that, that there's, there's no risk involved. There's, there's always risk involved anytime I think you, you know, you walk out your door. And so really, we're, really, our plan is to look at, you know, how do we mitigate the risk to our, to our kids and to our staff? And, and do that to the best of our ability. And so that's really, you know, as we work through this, so you will hear that term over and over again about mitigating risk or reducing risk and things along those lines as we, as we work to, as we work to open schools again. One of the things I want to touch on right off the bat is, as we got ready to, to have these conversations and we've been having these conversations for over a month, is we wanted to come up with, if you go to our next slide, Tim, guiding principles. Essentially, the guiding principles are the lens in which we are making decisions of the way we're looking at things. And I think it's important for people to understand that, you know, it's kind of our belief structure behind this. We have, as I said, there are 55 different work groups, I think, working on how do we get kids back to school? And we wanted to make sure that we were all kind of trying to look, you know, certain things from a certain lens. And so, you know, as a district, we believe that curricular, extracurricular and co-curricular experiences are vitally important to the well-being of our kids. We believe that educating the whole child, that there's a need to have face-to-face instruction. You know, that's, that's vitally important. And, and it includes that socio-emotional learning, the academic well-being, the physical and mental health needs of our kids. So, you know, it's, it's really some of those things that are very difficult to replicate, you know, from a distance learning standpoint. We believe that not providing opportunities for kids can be detrimental long-term. And, you know, that's one of the things that we're always weighing. I know that the American Association of Pediatrics has come out and said, you know, they believe that not opening schools has a greater risk to kids than, than opening schools related to COVID, but opening them within, within reason and doing reasonable mitigation strategies. We believe it's our responsibility to mitigate the risk associated with the spread of COVID and take that response. We do take that responsibility seriously. Yet we can't guarantee that we'll have a COVID-free environment. We'll do everything we can to mitigate those risks. And then it's critical that all of our families, our students and our staff understand and follow our, our protocols and expectations outlined in the, in, in the, in this presentation. And then also as we have new directives that come from the district as we move forward. As we broke into these work groups and they're still ongoing and you'll see this in the plan, we really wanted to make sure that every decision that we were making, we were kind of encompassing these questions. In the next, the next slide, Tim. And, and it really is about what is our local data telling us? What advice are we hearing from, from the agencies associated with this particular planning area? How, how well can we implement, you know, mitigation procedures? You know, what value does the activity provide? You know, the easy button on a lot of things is just say cancel. You know, let's not do it, cancel. And, you know, I think, you know, as we've had discussions, it's, you know, these, these kids, you know, it's their only fifth grade year or it's their only freshman year, it's their only senior year. And so, you know, really looking at, are we able to do some of these activities? Are we able to provide this instruction? Are we able to do some of these things with reasonable mitigation practices in place so that the kids can still have experiences? And, you know, we're also looking at what feedback have we heard from our community? And, and what are they telling us? And then what additional costs would the district incur in order to mitigate risk for this activity or program? And so all of those things are taken into consideration as we work through it. And which brings kind of the next part of the plan, which is really, our plan is broken into kind of four major areas. Operations, instruction, support services, and then the programs, activities and events. I'll be spending a lot of my time talking about the operational side of things. And that's really kind of how we're going to run the day-to-day and the physical spaces. The plan is not to go through and read this, you know, line by line, but to highlight different, different areas. And at any point, you know, I'd ask board members to stop me, ask questions. Go ahead, Sue.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I really thought you wrote a very powerful and emphatic and well-offering direction in your opening statement. And I really appreciated it. And especially talking about the mitigated fact, mitigating factors that we're making a big effort to deal with. And in some ways, an earlier format for that, very different reason, was when we had to start dealing with live shooters. And we, I think we ended up, Tracy can tell me, I think we had like an 80-page document plan to read over and to approve. And, and then there were some physical factors, we, many physical factors we put into place to be prepared should something like that arise. So I, 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 I know that our community knows we're giving this 100% F-I-S-T effort and consideration, both for the safety of our staff and of course for our children. So thank you for those, those opening guidelines and statement.
Thanks, Sue.
Sue, thank you. I want to follow up on that too and just see if other board members have other comments. Because I think we do need to make sure, on the guiding principles, for instance, does anybody have any issue with the guiding principles? I think that, you know, these are pretty basic, but, you know, about educating the whole child, the importance of the curricular and co-curricular experiences and so forth. Anybody have any issue with those guiding principles where we're starting from?
They're great.
Good, all right. So anyway, with that, I didn't mean to back up.
Mr. President, I think it's implied in here, but I would also just say that when we're talking about all of our kids, to recognize that just because something worked for a family does not mean it works for all families and that we're really trying to think about all of the kids throughout our district and a learning experience that's going to, that's going to work, really recognizing the different situations that kids are in and the positive, negative impact that any action may have. So I think that's implicit in those statements, but I know we've had a lot of conversation about that. I know staff has had conversation about that, but just want to reiterate that.
It's a good point. Thank you, Heather. All right. And, and just like on those decision-making questions, there's a ton of other questions. You know, your document that you had put forward before about all the issues that we're looking at, it would double the size of this document if we had everything in there. But these are certainly understanding what we're doing when we're trying to make this cost benefit analysis, so.
Absolutely. And I think it's important people understand that the cost benefit analysis is not necessarily cost related to financial cost, but just.
Risk benefit, I guess that's what I should have said.
No, but really, I mean, it really is, you know, when we keep kids out of school, there is a cost to that. And, and again, it's not a financial cost, but there is a cost to them and their education. And so we're always kind of weighing those different components as we go through it. So as we start to talk about physical spaces and, and what we're planning on doing, we are, we are planning on arranging classroom furniture so that we can try to get six feet of separation between students when they're in the classrooms. We realize that we do have some classrooms that have tables and things like that. We are working at either additional tables in those rooms so we can spread kids out or some dividers, plexiglass dividers that we're, we're working through. You know, and there'll be lots of visual reminders in the, in the buildings as to the six-foot separation. And, and it's funny, my youngest, who is going into first grade, came home from summer school and they were talking about how they needed to, you know, socially distance. And, and they told him, you want to stay about the distance of a mattress or a couch away from, away from the person around you. You know, trying to give a first grader some type of context of, you know, how far is six feet roughly? And, and what does that look like? And so, you know, the challenges that we have with this stuff is making sure that we're, you know, we have to be able to adapt to some of our littlest learners to all, also, you know, some of our biggest learners as it relates to juniors and seniors. But we are going to be looking at some plastic, plexiglass barriers and offices and other appropriate public spaces. You've seen them probably in local, just about every local business has some type of barriers and things along those lines. We are also going to be increasing daily and weekly cleaning, disinfect, and disinfecting by facilities and grounds. Classroom cleaning will be increased, disinfecting throughout the day. And then obviously, we'll be doing more hand sanitizers. And I think the thing that's important for people to understand is, a lot of people say, well, what about deep cleaning when you have a positive case? Well, one of the challenges that you run into is you could have somebody that's positive and not get their test results back for multiple days, you know, after, you know, they've gone in for a test. So we, we feel like we have to be upfront with that cleaning on a regular basis. Because if all of a sudden, you know, you find out that the person, a person five days later tested positive and we've had people in those spaces or those, those different things, doing a deep clean at that point starts to become moot. And so we're really focusing our efforts on how can we ensure that we're, you call deep clean or extensive cleaning on a regular basis versus once a week trying to, you know, tear everything down and clean it that way? Because we think that we really got to be on that, on that more regular cleaning schedules to work through that. Additionally, you know, our ventilation, we have been running our buildings at a higher rate of outside air and we will continue to run them at a higher rate compared to what we normally have, that fresh air and that turnover and really making sure we're dumping air in our buildings quite frequently. You know, in order to do that, we've already enlisted, you know, engineers and architects to make sure they're commissioning our systems, making sure if there's anything that we need to be able to handle that in our buildings that we're getting on it now. I mean, just for example, you start, you know, if it's January and it's negative 25 degrees out and you start bringing negative 25 degree air into the building, you have to be able to heat that air up, obviously. And you, if your system starts to go down or can't handle that, you end up with blocks of ice for air handling units and then it's not good for anybody. And so we are working on those things, making sure that our systems are ready to handle all those things. You know, we know they can handle those things, but you, it's, it's, it's kind of like going on a vacation and you take your car sometimes to have it serviced, the oil change. Hey, make sure everything looks pretty good before we go on the vacation. I don't want it to break down while we're on vacation. And so it's, it's kind of that similar type thing. We're also looking at different filtration in the buildings and things like that. We're, we're really looking at and working with the engineers on true tested methods, not, you know, you know, what, what have they seen that works well? You know, whether it be certain types of air filters and things like that as we, as we work through that. We want to make sure that we are definitely doing things that we know are going to have a substantial impact. So when it comes to the clean and physical distancing and ventilation, any, any questions about that? Or what our plan of attack is going to be? No, I'm sorry, it's, this is, it's, there's no dialogue with the public, so.
Any board members have questions on this? Otherwise, we'll move to the next slide. Okay, Heather?
I do have a question. So Nick, do you have a sense for what percentage maybe of our classrooms are going to have enough space to achieve full six-foot physical distancing versus something else?
Yeah. You know, and a lot of it, you know, really a lot of it's going to depend as we get these things reconfigured. You know, obviously, our class sizes range quite a bit, you know, so you could have, even at the high school, you could have a teacher has a fourth period class and maybe has 21 kids in it and their fifth period class has 28 kids in it and, you know, it looks a lot different. So really, I know Dave's been working with the building principals to really inventory their buildings and say, okay, are there any of these rooms that you really find that are going to be almost impossible to accommodate those things? And what other things can we do to try to mitigate with that? As of right now, I don't, Dave, not to put you on the spot, but have you got, I don't think we have that information back yet.
No, we don't have all the details, but what we do have is a general plan by classroom of what would be necessary, as you ask Heather, if you cannot guarantee that physical distancing. And when, when we get into that, then we get into things like the clear plastic barriers and other things we can do when it's just not feasible with a full-size class. We're also learning a lot. And Nick has talked about summer school as an opportunity to dip toes in the water a little bit and figure things out. Obviously, we're running summer school at a greatly reduced capacity, which allows us to figure some things out. We'll continue to inventory and figure out what we need to do. A lot of those decisions will be hinged upon decisions that you make tonight or in the near future and providing us the guidance.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask David a question. I'm just curious, as you have been looking, David, at the, during the inventory, are we finding that in, in some of the elementary schools that teachers are going to make modifications about what they bring back to the classroom in terms of, I don't know, furniture, fish, you know, whatever? And so that we actually can better distance the students?
Yep, that's a great question. That's happening at all levels. Our dumpsters are getting a workout right now. So a lot of teachers have gone in and cleared out some extra things that they had in their classroom that may have taken up space that would be better utilized to maximize physical distancing. So that's happening and principals are providing guidance to going through rooms and saying, hey, we might need to reconsider this arrangement or, or things along that, along those lines. When we look at each room, as Nick said, it's very dependent on the number of kids and also the sort of instruction that takes place. Because it's one thing to say, we're just going to spread all the desks out, but they also need to determine if that matches the instructional needs of that environment. One of the things that is, that we're looking at is taking desks that were in storage and replacing some tables with desks because obviously it's easier to space out. So that's just another thing we're doing, going through existing inventory to see if we can maximize the space we have in our current locations.
Mr. President, are we looking at doing anything with, I know we used to do one-way hallways back when we were real crowded with the old building. Now that we've got more hallways, thankfully, are they looking at that as well?
So we do have, those are some of the meetings that we have coming up. Passing times, recess, some of those meetings are still to happen yet and what our plan is going to be for those things. And so that'll be an ongoing discussion with both the, you know, the building level administrators and trying to figure out what's, what's the best way to, to deal with that. Obviously, at the elementaries, it becomes a lot easier because they usually stick to the right side of the hall whenever they're walking through. But the high school, middle school is going to create a little bit more of a challenge for us. And so that's. Whenever they're walking through, but uh, the high school, middle school is gonna create a little bit more of a challenge for us. And so that's. One of the things that we're gonna be brainstorming with them and what that could look like when school's open in the fall, but that, that is a decision that has not been made, made yet.
Good question. Um, any more questions on physical distancing? All right.
Okay. Uh, the next slide is, is uh, screening expectations. And so. Uh, we've had a lot of conversation about this. We've had a lot of conversations with public health about this. Um, and, and other healthcare professionals. Uh, obviously there's a list of symptoms uh, that uh, are tied to COVID. Uh, and. The, the thing that's tough about this is there's a variety of other things that can cause these symptoms, not just COVID. Uh, and so, but uh, the, the, the screening expectations that we are going to have and that we'll be educating both our staff and our, and our parents. And our kids on is that there has to be a level of self-screening because some people might say, well. Why wouldn't you take temperatures once they get here? Or why wouldn't you do some of those things? Well, part of the reason why is in talking with public health. You know, up to eighty percent of kids that are test positive for COVID could be symptom free. And so you could be screening for kids and saying, wow, we have nobody with a fever and we're really good and we should be good and not have to worry about these other things. When all actuality, that's, that's not gonna be a symptom that's gonna show up. And so. The other piece is, is we, we would like parents to, you know, constantly be vigilant on that and checking those things before they put them on a school bus for an hour. And, and then, you know, they come to our buildings. And so. This is kinda one of those all hands on deck. There's, there's gonna be kind of that. That expectation that, you know, we're all in this together and that there's, there's, that people are gonna, that are, people are gonna do some level of self-screening. Um, that also means however, that our staff will be trained in what to look for us, you know, so as the day goes on and, and um. Our nursing staff and, and, and our other health staff. So it's not as though. Okay, once the kid gets to school, we're not gonna worry about symptoms or anything like that. We're absolutely gonna have the look fours and things like that. It's just that as of right now, we would not recommend that we are taking everybody's temperature as they walk in the door. Uh, or having them fill out a questionnaire every day as they're walking in the door. Um, you know, there's that expectation that's, that's happening prior to them coming in. And again, well, our staff keeping an eye out for any of these different components. Uh, as we, as we work through it. So, you know, one of the things with, with symptoms and, and, and this is still, we're working through as public health is. You know, what are the day requirements? So if I'm symptomatic or, or positive case protocols, things like that, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things that come into play here. They are changing. Um, and you know, we have, we have put things out, uh, and we will continue to put things out. Um, because it, it is gonna be, it is gonna be a challenge on, on some of these things. Um. You know, headache is one of the symptoms. I mean, a lot of people get, you know, we have a lot of kids that get headaches and there's a lot of staff to get headaches or. Even, you know, sore throat, which also could be strep and have nothing to do with, with COVID, you know, so. There's just a lot of different pieces and, you know, typically with like strep, for example, you're back after being on antibiotics for twenty-four hours and no fever, then you can come back to. School. Well, with COVID, that's not the case, you know, you, you need to be out longer. So. Uh, again, we're, our screen expectations are gonna be subject to change, but they're gonna be based on the recommendations from our, our state and local um, public health and, and the CDC and what they would like to see us do with those, those different components. As far as the screening goes. And again, like I said, I can't stress enough, there'll be lots of communication uh, on, on there about that. And we'll be talking to staff about it as well.
Any questions on screening expectations, Heather?
Nick, I'm, I'm guessing then there, there might need to be additional resources to field all those phone calls. I mean, that, to your point, those are a lot of common symptoms. And so if. If we're asking families to contact the school before coming in and if they're compliant. I mean, I, I've been in those schools at seven thirty in the morning in those front offices and they're not sitting around waiting for the phone to ring by noon. So I assume that's part of the plan too, to ensure that we're ready to. To respond and.
Yep.
And yeah.
Yeah, we're working on what, what the staffing looks like for all these different various components of the plan. You know, we've talked to you guys about that in different, in different ways, but. Uh, yeah, there's, there's no doubt about it. I mean, it's, it's. It, it's gonna put a tax on the system, you know, a lot of pressure on the system. And so uh, some of this stuff, you know, we're gonna need to do some just in time. Uh, support and some of the stuff we can front load and, and work through. Um, and, and kinda see how, how these things go. I mean, obviously there'll be people that will say, wow, you could have the parent that sends the kid when they know they have a symptom. That's, that's, that's absolutely true. I mean, we, we, I mean, we have that now. I mean, we have parents that. Um, could send a child that maybe has a sore throat to school or is running a fever and maybe they give them some Tylenol and then send them and. You know, I mean, that, that happens right now. And so. Um, like I said, we're all kinda in this thing together and there's kind of an expectation that everybody's gonna kinda, you know, help with this. Uh, but as symptoms come up at school, we're gonna be, our staff will be trained to be able to, you know, recognize them and take the appropriate action.
Before we advance the next slide, I just have a comment to add, um, cause I served on um. One of the subcommittees on the, for the task force to determine the protocols for the. Opening the courthouse to the public. And there was great discussion about. Um, you know, temperature taking. And in fact, I guess the county. You know, did order and purchase. A machine that people walk through and so forth, but they opted then to not even use it at the main entrance. And they also opted not to create a medical record by having people fill out a written questionnaire. So when people enter the courthouse, it's similar to this administration's recommendation of kind of self-reporting. Because they just don't have the personnel to track people down and say, oh, I thought I saw you cough or sniffle, you know, and we're just not gonna be able to. Chase people around like that. It's gonna have to be um, uh, on a self-reported basis. But. Once we get kids in classrooms and if at the elementary level, they're in there for six, seven hours at a time. You know, teachers are gonna start to know like which kids, you know. They have to watch for. And if the parents are doing their due diligence, being part of the team, then that will get um, heads up will be given to the teacher in that regard to watch for that stuff. But anyway, just a comment that at least at the county level, they are not taking temperatures and they are not doing written questionnaires.
Jamie?
Yes?
Uh, just a question. Are we seeing any districts out there that we've heard of or know of that are, are taking temperatures or keeping records?
Um, not, none that I am, uh, none that I'm aware of in the area. Doesn't mean the, you know, somebody say, well, I heard so-and-so was, but I mean, to the best of my knowledge right now, I don't believe anybody is. And a lot of that came from uh, the advice of legal counsel, um, both from our insurance carriers and, and um. General counsel that. Once you go down the route on some of these things, you start to then assume the responsibility for ensuring that every single person that walks through one of your facilities is. Has been screened in that manner. And then if you do miss somebody. You know, that, that creates some challenges for you. And so, you know, the advice of our insurance carrier, the advice of our general counsel is. That's not a route we want to go down because. They don't believe it's uh, a high um. Value, you know, that you're gonna catch a bunch of, you know, you're gonna screen out a bunch of people. They, they just. The risk uh, far outweighs they believe the reward associated with it. And I just wanna remind people, Tim kinda talked to me, and make sure that when you are talking, get right into that microphone so that people. One, you have a mask on, remember? So it's kinda muffled. So. Just uh, if, if board members wanna make sure they're uh, get close.
Great segue to the next slide, Nick, which is face coverings and masks.
Um.
Not that anyone's ever got an email about that yet.
Yes, you know, uh. So face covering, uh, face covers and masks, yeah, this has obviously been one of the, uh, probably one of the most discussed issues related to reopening schools. Uh, reopening businesses, reopening communities. Um, as we, as we look at these, these different components. And we did send the email out uh, earlier. Uh, or at the end of last week, as we look to require uh, face coverings and or mask uh, at the uh. Summer school and, and school age care programming that we have this summer. Um. And so es- essentially. The recommendation of administration is that we would require uh, face covering or mask. Um, basically at all times when social distancing is not possible. And so. Um. You know, if, if you can social distance, then you'd be able to, you know, take that mask off. If you can't. Um, then the expectation is the mask is on. And so. Um, and the, kind of the rationale behind that is. Uh, we do believe, uh, based on the research that we're seeing, uh, from what we're hearing from public health, from what we're hearing from the CDC, from what we're hearing. Um, uh, from even the American Association of Pediatrics that said, hey, we need to open schools. Is we do believe that masks play an important role to keeping our schools open. And, you know, there are a lot of studies out there that say masks are not effective. As it relates to protecting you from catching something. And we understand that, but the, the reason we're requiring masks is not necessarily about the wearer. Not catching something as much as it is about the wearer not spreading something. And so. Um, we do know that there has been plenty of studies that have shown that uh, wearing a mask does cut down on the amount of droplets that are. You know, uh, excreted out into the air and the aerosols and things like that. It is never gonna cover a hundred percent. We, we understand that. But if requiring mask when social distancing is not possible. Um, helps us keep our schools open, allows us to continue our face-to-face instruction with our kids. We think it is a reasonable mitigation strategy to employ uh, with the school district. Um, I understand that you guys are getting, you know, calls and, and emails um, on both sides of the spectrum. Uh, but really we're looking at that. We are uh, based on what we're seeing, um, you know, from CC, from public health. Again, the American Association of Pediatrics, we do not believe that masks create any type of impediment to breathing or, or having a conversation. There will be the ability that if somebody has a medical related reason not to wear a mask. You know, they will with, with a uh, um, what they note from a doctor, similar to we have other things, uh, be able to then not have to wear a mask. Um, but it will, you know, as of right now, as we're sitting, the recommendation would be. Uh, that unless they're unable medically to wear a mask, that we would have the expectation that people would wear masks. The only other exception that we would have is. Uh, for um, a religious exa- exemption. So if there was, you know, something. Uh, where, that was, you know, religious in nature that wouldn't allow somebody to wear, uh, to wear a mask. Um, you know, yeah, we've, we would allow that exemption. Again, it would uh, according to legal counsel, it would have to be obviously a bona fide religion. An established religion and it would have to be an established practice within that religion. Um, and so in order to ma- to meet the religious exemption. And so um, we would, we would give that, that opportunity. There will be things that will come up. There will be uh, cases that come up where we have. Um. Children that have um, sensory type of uh, issues or challenges uh, that they, that they face. And. We'll be dealing with those on a case-by-case basis. Our, you know, our student services department will be working on that. But, you know, overall, the expectation, like you said, is, is that mask would be required. Um, all the time, uh, when, when inside, when inside spaces, all the way down to. Uh, littlest learners, our, our, our four K classrooms and kindergarten. We believe by. There will be breaks in the day. So if they're in their classroom and they can be six feet apart. They can take their mask off. So it's not necessarily that somebody's gonna put a mask on at seven thirty in the morning and not take it off until five o'clock at night. You know, if there are opportunities for them to be socially distanced and not have to wear the mask, we, we wanna. We want to take advantage of those things because we want the kids comfortable, but um, you know, we'll continue to work through that. I know masks are a big thing, so I guess I'll open it up for questions or comments from the board.
Uh, Mister President.
Yeah, and, and as we get this discussion started, I was just hoping that we get um, the comments as we're going through this. Um, we'll get all the discussion. I anticipate that there will be a, a vote taken at the end. Uh, adopting the recommendations and we may come on a slide, come upon a slide where. Uh, we ask a bunch of questions and decide that we would like to see an amendment to that slide. And then we could do that um, kind of as we go rather than circling back and redoing the whole list one at a time. So we're going through these now. I'm just opening it up for talking about the mask policy. Yes, Sue?
Um, Dr. Alad, I'm glad you pointed out the fact of the um, relationship of being able to keep the schools um, and classes open. Because of students wearing masks. And I had a conversation today earlier with um, one of the uh, teaching staff. And uh, kinda talked about it as being like a carrot. Uh, that if we are wearing masks, then we can continue to have in-person schooling. And they're, they're kinda going hand in hand. Um, my only other question, and I know there's no answer tonight, but I'm hoping that our nursing staff or. Whoever the appropriate officials would be can maybe prepare some kind of um. Uh, guidelines, kind of hygiene guidelines for mask wearing. Uh, you know, I'm already anticipating that maybe on some of the younger age groups, maybe they should have two masks. Who knows what's gonna go on, on the other side of that mask. Uh, you know, with little kids or something. Um, and so may, and for parents too about washing or how to take them on and off and so on. And I know that's not tonight. We might wanna get into the weeds, but it might, it would be really helpful to learn some uh, hygiene guidelines, I think, if, if somebody down the road will be working on those. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Other board members weighing in on the, the mask issue?
Mister President?
Yes, Carrie?
Would now be the time to ask about uh, lunch scheduling or recess possibly?
So, um. Uh, we're gonna talk about food service in here, so that's part of the plan. Uh, as far as recess goes. We have not made a final determination on recess. That meeting actually is scheduled for tomorrow, um, as we work through this. Uh, but. Um, once we have that information, we'll continue to kinda put that out and, and let people know what, what we're thinking. But. Again, the mask, uh, the mask requirement or the face covering requirement is. You know, when physical distancing is impossible and, and primarily indoors. You know, is, is what we're looking at. Now, it may have to change, but um, we're really, right now, we're really talking about when kids walk into our buildings, you know, what, what can they expect?
Other questions on this? Yes, Heather?
Well, Jamie, I just wanna acknowledge, I mean, that we've all received a lot of emails on this subject. It was alluded to earlier. And that um, it's been a great example of. How you can find research to support any position you wanna make, which is what makes this really tough, right? There's not. One study that we can put at, point out and say, see, there's the conclusive evidence. And I think. I mean, in my mind, in that situation in particular, we have to lean on then the collective recommendations that we get from places like the CDC. The Department of Health, our local county public health, um, you know, and I also know I, I had a conversation over lunch today with someone who actually is a mask advocate. Um, despite being, um. Despite being, despite not agreeing with me on a whole lot of other issues, he's a strong mask advocate. Um, but one of the things he brought up was that, well, even the CDC has been inconsistent, you know, early on, they said we don't need them and then later, and I think just to really recognize that. I mean, since mid-March, we have learned a lot about a disease that we didn't know much about. And I think. You know, the CDC has itself said that early on, they thought there was low disease prevalence. They didn't fully understand the extent that people could be asymptomatic. And so, um. You know, again, but I guess just to acknowledge that this is tough and people have strong opinions about it. And there's a lot of research out there. Um, and we have at the national, state and local level. Some of I think the smartest minds and I, even locally, some of our very respected local docs who are strongly advocating for, for mask wearing. So, um. Yeah, I appreciate the mask wearing, um, uh, in this. And I, I, and I liked what you said. Nick, I mean, the way you say it almost made it sound like. Masks are required at all times unless you are truly able to physically distance because. I mean, I, in, in general, I lean toward at all times indoors, period. Um, but I'm intrigued by this idea that there are some times indoors where we could actually be pretty darn. Safely far apart and that's a good time to take a break from the mask because, um, you know, I'm already, but I, I get it. You don't wanna wear one of these for, for eight hours straight. So, thank you.
Mister President?
Yes, Bruce?
So, uh, good comments, Heather. I agree with your comments and uh, agree with the policy. Uh, but if someone chooses not to wear a mask. Uh, they still want education, what's available for them? And will we have that later on in this deck? Or? If, if someone were to say, listen, I'm. Not gonna wear a mask, but I still have a right to an education?
Yes, so uh, we do have the virtual option that will be available and Dave will be, Dave will be talking about that coming up. Uh, a little bit, you know, a few more slides down. And so. You know, i- i- yeah, that, that would be our expectation that if you would like the face-to-face. like the face-to-face option and you'd like to be in our buildings, uh, for school, this is, this is the expectations that you would be expected to comply with. If you don't want to comply with that, we will have, we still provide, uh, uh, free public education through our, through our virtual options.
Great.
Thank you. Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bob.
I, I would think that, you know, looking at, I've been reading a lot of both sides of the mask issue and, and concerns. Um, as far as my thought really is, it's, it's a compromise, it's not one size fits all. There are accommodations for special cases. Um, I think looking at, my concern would be what happens? You've got kids that are asymptomatic or, or could still be positive and they don't get sick or have the health problems, but they're in the rooms with the staff and the staff is older and the staff does. And then the questioning, if we want to stay open, we have to keep our staff healthy. Where, where would we, would we actually be to the point where if we have an outbreak, we have to shut down because we don't have substitute teachers? Because all districts will be going through the same concerns. So I, I hope people realize that it's, it's, the, the staff is so important to keep this. No one wants to open up and then close down the road. So I'm siding with keeping things as, as safe as possible and making concessions.
Yeah, no, Bob, you, you make an absolute great point. I mean, the reason we've, we've gone this route with face coverings for all is it is, it is about our kids, but it's also about our staff. And the, the one thing we know about masks, the research does tell us is, you know, it's about you not spreading it to somebody else. And so if we say, well, we're just going to put staff in mask and not put kids in mask, then all of a sudden, you know, what message does that potentially send to our staff? And so, you know, we feel very strongly as an administration that if we're going to be supportive of our staff and we want to keep our buildings open, and I think you hit the nail on the head, it, it, it is about trying to protect our staff to the best of our ability and what we think is reasonable in order to do that. Um, it, it is probably the number one thing that we will be facing as far as keeping our buildings open is keeping our buildings staffed. And so if we can do things to reduce the risk to our staff so that we can keep our buildings open, that was really, you know, uh, you know, a big push, uh, as we, as we continue to work through this. Cause I know a lot of people will say, come on, you know, it's a lower risk to kids and, and, you know, we need to, you know, come on, i- i- yes, I, and we understand that. We've seen that research. We're not arguing that it is, you know, potentially a lower risk to kids. However, you know, we have eight hundred and about sixty adults in our buildings that are trying to educate those kids on a daily basis and we really need to make sure that we keep them healthy to the best of our ability, mitigate the risk to them. And, uh, that's, that's really where this, this came from. Um, as, you know, some people would say, well, that seems kind of selfish. Uh, uh, I think people want us to keep our buildings open and if, like I said, this helps us keep our buildings open, um, you know, we're, we're going to try our best to implement.
Mr. President, just one more comment. I mean, my hope is that, um, the directive around when masks can come off or the, the notice would, would be, would be like somehow staff regulated? I mean, I guess that's, just thinking about my own two, you know, seventeen and thirteen year old kids, I think it's asking for trouble if kids themselves are going to be determining when I'm socially distanced and when I'm not, when I have to put my mask on and when I don't. Um, so I think, you know, the idea that masks are required, except when you're told they're not, that they're not because you're in a space that's safe, um, I think that, you know, that's going to be the most likely to get the mask compliance that we, that we're looking for and not leaving it to individual kids to determine if they are socially distanced or not.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, it's going to be a piece. I mean, I think there's, it's going to be give and take. We've never kind of undertaken anything quite like this. Some people would say, well, it's, you know, and you have a dress code, you enforce a dress code, but it's, it's, it's different. It just is, as much as, you know, people want to say it's the same, it's just not. Um, but yeah, I mean, I can tell you like this, this morning, my son was at the way to leap programming, you know, and they told him, okay, you guys are, you know, you guys are spread out, you're outside, you know, you guys can go ahead and take your mask off, okay? Hey, we're going to be heading back inside to do some things, need you to put your mask back on before we head in and get back in line. They also reminded them that as they're getting ready to dismiss, back out to the cars and things like that, that's when kids tend to mix the most. You know, they, they had them put the, put their mask back on. So, yeah, I think there'll be a lot of direction from adults as we kind of work through that. Um, and, you know, we're finding that, you know, it, it's never going to be perfect and we will have people that push back, but, uh, not going to, you know, the kids, kids have been very good, you know, here we are, day one. So, and Sue had something.
Well, just, I wanted to say one more thing on, on Bob's comment and I'm glad he brought up the valuing of staff because I'm, I'm sure staff are listening to us and just wondering, what are you going to do to keep me as safe as possible? Um, you know, while I'm in the classroom, uh, with thirteen or whatever number of kids I have in there, so I'm glad you brought that up. Um, so I hope that they're listening to this and knowing how much we value their work and we want to protect them to the best of our ability, uh, with the mitigation practices that we're going to put in place. And, uh, sometimes you should have Bob tell you the protocols he has to go through because he works in a medical facility and they can change day to day. Um, and it's, uh, much more intense than what we're talking about here. So if we need to make stiffer planning, um, we certainly can look to the medical, um, protocols as well. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I don't want to belabor the discussion, but certainly want to, I mean, Carrie, I think, I think you weighed in on this one, but I wanted to give you the opportunity because of, you know, it's important.
No, I'm in, uh, full agreement with everything being said.
All right, thank you. And just for that information, I, I agree with all the comments that have been made and, um, but just to point out one thing that you said, Sue, and then you later, um, qualified it. So I just want to make sure, cause you said something about trying to make everything as safe as possible for our kids and staff. And you got to put that word reasonably in there because we are not going to be able to guarantee safety. But, um, to me, having weighed this, um, subject and having looked at some of those links that we were set, sent, I think that, um, is wearing a mask, uh, I guarantee you're not going to get COVID. No, it's not. We're not pretending that it is, but, uh, has there been enough evidence that cloth masks can reduce the spread? Yes, it doesn't eliminate. And so some of those sites that did test comparing cloth masks with, um,
N ninety-fives?
N ninety-fives, uh, or, or the highest medical grade masks there are, of course, the highest grade medical masks are going to be more effective. But that kind of logic, unless you can have the absolute best masks, then don't have any mask policy, makes no sense to me. And again, trying to mitigate, but yet reasonably keep it going. And I just really think it's important to have the, strongly agree with the administration's recommendation to go back and at least start the school year with the face-to-face instruction five days a week. And, um, with a strict, fairly strict mask policy, again, with reasonable accommodation. We had one person send us an email saying, I can't understand why you're requiring masks a hundred percent of the time. Well, they obviously didn't read the recommendation. It's not a hundred percent of the time. We're not going to force kids who have autism or other, um, medical reasons for not wearing a mask, we're not going to force them to wear a mask. We're going to do whatever we can to make it reasonably safe and mitigate the, the dangers to our staff and other students. Um, but, uh, I think we've got, I think you've got the consensus from the board on support on that. So unless there's other comments, we'll just keep moving.
Okay, and I know that, that was a, a big item and didn't, you know, the decision on that didn't come lightly. We had a lot of discussions about it. So some of these items are, we'll probably go through a little bit quicker. As far as individual supplies and equipment, we're going to make every effort to not have kids sharing equipment or sharing, uh, supplies. We're going to try to have individual, um, supplies for those things. If there's equipment that needs to be shared, trying to clean between uses and making sure that that's, that's being taken care of. Um, visitors and volunteers, you know, visitors, uh, similar to our, our kids would be expected to self-screen prior to coming to our buildings. Uh, visitors who enter the buildings, you know, would be the recommendation by the administration be, they'd be required to, to mask. They would have to have masks in our buildings. Uh, non-essential visitors would not be allowed beyond the main office. So this is probably one of the biggest changes. I mean, so we will be looking at, uh, you know, things like, you know, as far as who do we need to have in our buildings as far as volunteers? Uh, who do we need to have in our buildings as far as visitors? And that's going to be an ongoing conversation all the way up to and including past the first day of school and making adjustments. But, um, right now, it's, it would be considered non-essential visitors are basically going to be, uh, limited and not, not allowed in the building.
Nick, can you give us an example of, of who that might be?
Um, so it, it may be, um, somebody that wants to run something down to a, a kid's locker. Uh, it might be, um, you know, potentially we haven't, you know, I don't want it too far ahead, but you know, it may be that for a time being, we're going to not allow parents come and eat lunch with their elementary age kids. Um, and again, we don't have that quite flushed out, but those, those types of things that will be going on. We'll also be looking at, you know, uh, if we have guest speakers in classrooms, can it be done in a different manner? Could it be done potentially virtually instead of having to have the person actually come to the room, uh, as we work through some of those things?
But so Nick, just to, to clarify, I mean, to confirm, so basically any person who enters the building who is not a student or a staff member will be wearing a mask, whether it's a contractor or a security officer or, I mean, but if they're going into the building and, and they're going to be wearing a mask.
Yeah, the expectation is that people coming into our buildings have masks on. Um, moving on to, uh, communicating confirmed COVID nineteen cases. So this is a big one because we want to be as open and transparent with the parents and the general public as we can be. Um, so what we did is we broke down, uh, basically what it's going to look like. So if there is a positive case in an elementary building, um, there will be a letter sent to all parents of that building, that they have kids in that building, identifying that the, the classroom and that there's a confirmed case. Uh, some people say, well, do you really have to identify the classroom? Well, I can just tell you from experience that if we say there's been a confirmed case at Hudson Prairie, if we don't say where, you know, it's, it's that, it, we're going to get tons of calls saying, well, was it in my kid's classroom or, you know, where was it? So we're going to be upfront and say it's in, you know, Mr. Smith's fourth grade classroom, you know, and, and it could be an adult, it could be, it could be a, a student, but we're going to put that out there. Also, what is part of that letter and that, that, that Tracy has drafted is, you know, whether or not you are a close contact to that case is determined by public health, not by the school district. And so it, it will talk about how if you are considered a close contact, you will be contacted by public health. If you're not getting contacted by public health, then you can assume that your child is not considered a close contact. Um, and public health has done a great job in being able to make those close contact calls within twenty-four hours. They've really done well with that. At the middle school level, uh, a building-wide letter would go as well, uh, and it would identify the grade level and the house in which it was in. Um, but because those kids intermix between classes, it's not, you know, we're not going to say it was in Mr. Smith's first hour class and, and Mrs. Jones's second hour class. It is just going to be the house and the grade level. At the high school, um, it is, it will be a building-wide letter identifying the grade level of the, of the child or of the staff, you know, if it's a staff member, but, um, to the best of our ability, it becomes a lot more difficult as you have kids intermixing with different classes and things along those lines. As far as activities and events, so if we happen to have a positive case, let's say on a, uh, team or as part of a club, uh, there'd be a building-wide letter that would go out, uh, identifying the activity or the event of the confirmed case, provided there are at least ten or more individuals involved in it. And the reason we say that is, is if, you know, we, we put out that we have a confirmed case and, you know, it's on, uh, the tennis team and we're all the way through the season and there's only three tennis players left because it's, you know, substate or whatever it is, we want to be very careful that we are not identifying kids. And so what we've, you know, our recommendation has been if, uh, if we can't keep it, if we can't identify a group that has at least ten or more participants, then we wouldn't identify the group so that we can keep some level of anonymity for those. Um, you know, we will get calls, there will be people that will tell us that I have a right to know, you need to tell me, who is this person? Uh, you know, due to student privacy, data privacy, we will not, we will not, uh, release names of people, um, that have tested positive. We just, we just won't. Uh, we don't do that now for whether it be influenza or pertussis or chicken pox or anything like that. Um, and so we're trying to fall somewhere along, somewhere along the same, same lines of what we've done with some of that stuff. Any questions about positive case communications? We're going to try to put out as much information as possible as quick as we can.
I know you want to move along. I need to tag on a little mask question. Um, do, has the Wisconsin, um, Associations of Athletics, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact acronym, but have they been putting out any, uh, guidelines or commentary or studies about, uh, you know, masks are going to impede a kid's breathing while they're, you know, uh, doing, playing hockey or something? Uh, is there anything coming from that organization?
Um, and we have it a few slides down. We're going to talk about W I A's recommendations and what.
I forgot.
No, you're just fine and, and kind of where we're sitting with that, absolutely.
I do have a quick question. So is it, is it safe to assume, and I realize this is not the district that does this, facilitates this process, it's public health, but part of that close contact investigation as a parent, I could, when it's all working well, if my kid in that middle school house recently worked closely with the person who tested positive on a project or whatever, I, I'm like, I'm likely going to get a call because my kid should be identified as a close contact. I mean, is that, is that what they're looking at when they're doing those investigations? And again, I realize it's not your investigation, but do you know enough about it to know?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're going to basically when they're, they have a questionnaire that they ask positive cases and primarily it's who have you been within six feet of, for at least fifteen minutes or more? Um, and, uh, again, it, that, that's kind of changing and it's fluid. And so I think that's why, you know, we're really leaving it to public health so that that is their call, uh, whether it relates to employees or, or to, uh, our, our kids. And so, um, now obviously if they call and say, hey, can you give us the names of the five kids that sat within six feet of this kid in their classes? You know, we would, you know, be able to provide those, those types of information, information sharing. We do have information sharing agreements with the county.
Okay.
Um, and so we'll.
But if there was contact tracing being done by public, that's going to be done by public health, not by anybody on the school district.
Yep, as of right now. Yeah, Carrie had a question.
And these are, these are emails going out, correct?
Yeah, these are emails that'll go out.
And I'm assuming also when a staff member would contract, there would be the same notification?
Yeah, so essentially it's, it's going to be whether it's student or staff, you know, so it may end up being a staff member in a certain grade or it may end up being a student in a certain grade, but, um, yeah, it, it'll be the, it'll be communication going out consistently. Yep.
Okay, any further questions on that? All right. Transportation is next.
And again, I, I know I sound like I'm doing most of these, but it, it is going to get turned over to Dave and, and Aaron and Tracy here, uh, before too long. Um, transportation expectations, uh, essentially students, drivers, bus aides are going to be required to wear face coverings while on the bus. Um, students will have assigned seats on the bus, uh, will be obviously grouping families together, um, which is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. Um, bus pickup areas at each school, they're going to be marked for physical distancing. We'll do the best we can with, with those different components. And then obviously modern, you know, accommodations will be made for, for children that need those. Um, we will be disinfecting the buses between routes. We're doing some adjustments with route times and things like that. Uh, and then also, uh, and this is where it creates a challenge, obviously trying to get more fresh air, but ensuring that we have more fresh air blowing through those buses. And you can imagine, one of the ways you do that is by opening more of the windows, uh, which does create some challenges when you're driving a bus in the middle of January and February. And it's not necessarily opening all the windows, but it may be that we're opening some of the windows in addition to running outside air through our, our heat system and, and things like that. You know, our, what we're really trying to do with those things is really trying to turn over the air inside, uh, you know, any of our spaces. Um, and, and we're going to try to circulate as much air as we can. Um, you know, we are, you know, some people have said, well, are you going to follow to a T the CDC's recommendations on, you know, busing and, and things like that? We, we're going to take every reasonable step we can to try to mitigate our risk in transportation, knowing that we probably won't be able to get a full six feet social distancing between kids. Uh, it would drive our bus capacity down to probably about eleven kids per bus, which would mean we'd be busing children from about six in the morning until about six at night just to get them to school. Um, and so that's just not reasonable. Some people will ask, well, why don't you double the amount of bus routes? Well, it's not quite that simple. Well, it's not quite that simple because uh one, you have to have more buses, you have to have more drivers. Right now, just finding drivers is a challenge, especially uh as you think about trying to make sure we have enough drivers when they get sick or if something like that happens uh as well. Um and so we'll continue to kind of kind of work through those different components. Any questions about transportation?
Um I've heard some concern about, you know, who's going to be policing those buses as far as the spacing? Is it the bus driver? Is it district personnel? Like, some parents have reached out saying, I just don't see how this is going to work. So.
Yeah, um you know, I think, you you know, it's 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 similar to what we what we've done in the past. I mean, if we're having issues on a bus where kids are not doing what they're supposed to do, then we can assign adults, additional adults to help ride that bus or to help do those those types of things. Um a lot of it is going to be the education piece with kids and why it is important that they're following these rules. I mean, and and why we're trying to do these things. Uh so it 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 is going to be a a case-by-case situation basis, you know, as we look through this. But we do have the ability that if we have to add additional bus monitors or things like that to buses that just won't comply. You know, if we have kids that just won't comply, uh to make sure that's happening. Um the district always reserves the right to, yeah, if kids are not following the rules, to remove them from the bus. And they lose their ability to ride the bus to school for a prescribed amount of time. And so uh we'd rather take the more proactive approach of educating kids why this is important. But if we have to get to the point where bus privileges are removed, um you know, we would, we would do that as well.
Mr. President, I think it's also worth um noting uh that we had numerous people who have been in favor of uh distancing and of face masks, et cetera, and have acknowledged that this is going to be a challenge from a staffing standpoint and have said they'd be willing to volunteer and help out. So I think just for folks who are listening to acknowledge that we saw that, we appreciate the offer. And I think that's something to consider, that we might have parent volunteers, community volunteers, who might be willing in situations like this to help, you know, control some of our costs by um volunteering to to serving some of those um those roles.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Yes, Kerry.
Sorry, Mr. President. Uh do you have an idea yet of what, by what percentage the ridership is anticipated to be down this year?
You know, based on our, based on our our parent survey that we sent out, um we would anticipate a drop in ridership of up to sixty percent. Um so if, you know, if we don't have a lot of kids riding the bus, this is not the year to try to save money and consolidate routes. Um we would run those routes with fewer, just run them with fewer kids on it, which will allow us more spacing on the buses. So uh we've had parents that have said, I'm not going to allow my kid to ride the bus. If you make them wear a mask, I'm not going to, you know, we've had other parents say, I'm not going to let my kid ride the bus if you don't make them wear a mask. And we've had parents say that, I'm just going to bring my kid to school. I'm not going to have them ride the bus, you know. So it's kind of the whole gamut. So right now, we there'll be another survey going out to parents. Uh it'll be tied to Skyward um in the next few weeks now that some of our planning's out to be able to get an understanding of what they're planning on doing as far as this fall with their kids. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
School meals?
Uh school meals. Um so breakfast is going to be grab and go at all levels. Uh lunch, uh lunch periods will be extended at the elementary in order to uh reduce the amount of kids that are in the cafeteria at any given time. And choices are going to be limited, uh and actually choices are going to be limited at all levels. So, you know, basically at the middle school and high school, we've had basically unlimited lunch choices. They can kind of mix and match meals and do some of those things. We are, we are not going to be doing that anymore. Um our meals are are going to be um served complete. Uh this is where it's, it's a fine line because uh we could easily put everything in disposable containers. And then we're going to create dumpster and dumpster loads of trash, which then you have the issue related to the environment. And so what we are planning to do with meals is uh because we're going to limit the choices, the food will be put on the trays as kids come in. Here's your tray. It already has utensils on it. You know, our food service workers will have the appropriate um stuff on, and here's the tray. You have the tray. It has your napkin on it. It has your utensils on it. It has all the food on it. Do we realize that there may, you know, that may cause uh some additional food to be thrown out? Yes, we understand that. Uh but we're trying to balance that with putting everything in styrofoam and disposable and and creating mounds and mounds of garbage. And so, you know, that's kind of our our balance. And and again, this is all fluid. I mean, if all of a sudden we find that, hey, we just can't do that, you know, we'll make adjustments. But we would anticipate that, you know, more parents are probably going to send lunches with their kids, uh you know. But again, we'll have to kind of look at it and see. Uh the other uh thing that will happen is, you know, again, we'll be um floor markings as visual reminders. Um we will have plexiglass um dividers uh in areas in uh where seating is happening. Uh and uh to make sure that we don't have kids sitting right across from each other and, you know, because one of the things you can't do with a mask on is you can't eat. It makes it kind of hard. So the kids have to take their mask off during lunch. They have to be able to eat. And so uh we are working on what those dividers look like and they've been ordered uh first round. Uh the other thing is, is the cafeterias will operate at fifty percent capacity. So similar to what restaurants have been recommended to do. So um you know, if the cafeteria can handle, you know, the high school eleven hundred kids in the in the lunchroom cafeteria area, you know, we're going to try to keep that below five hundred and fifty kids at any given time in the uh in the cafeteria space. Or the same thing at the elementary. We're going to try to run everything at fifty percent capacity and make adjustments to logistic to make that happen. Uh self-service food items like salad bars will not be out uh when we start school and for the foreseeable future. So anything that's like individual items, whether it be condiments or other items, will be all individually packaged items. There won't be any kind of the community use or the family style use of 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 those types of things. So there will be some additional waste associated with that.
Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Just in regards to that, um what does that do to our cost structure? Um does it streamline it? Does it make it more cost-effective for families? Uh because I thought we put through an increase last year. And if we're going to be slowing down our meal choices and, you know, uh streamlining that, I would think that would offer us some benefit there. And it's, and our our food program's never meant to be a cash-generating profit center for us. It's really meant to be uh cash-neutral or uh so maybe just curious if that's been discussed or and and recognize it's still very early on, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's um we don't quite know uh at this point. Uh and part of it is, we don't quite know what our our utilization rate will be uh as far as number of kids, you know, utilizing school lunch versus bringing their own lunch. Um because we're going to be taking on so many additional expenses as it relates to uh additional packaging for some of those items, even staffing in order to plate everything. Um the opportunity to save money by by pinching down the the choices is probably not going to be there. You know, our goal is to try to, you know, we think about mitigate our cost so that we're not having to supplement with general fund dollars by the end of the year, you know, as kind of as we look through it.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Nick, um so meal choices will be limited. Will there still be an à la carte line or is that gone?
Um no, I think that's more than likely going to be gone. I mean, so potentially, we have kicked around the idea of having like potentially three different full meal choices at the high school. So you go through this line and it's this meal, and you go through this line and it's this meal, and you go through this line, it's this meal, and you have your whole tray and everything's ready to go. Um which is a challenge for us because à la carte, um it's, I don't say it's, it it is the largest markup that we have. I mean, it's just, it's um there's, the most benefit comes from selling à la carte. And so, you know, we'll take, we'll take a hit that way. Um but uh yeah, it's going to be limited. I mean, at the middle school, it might only be two or three main, main options, and that's it. Otherwise, you're going to have to bring your own lunch, you know, as we, as we work through it. So.
Bob?
I know my my daughter's biggest concern would be if she hadn't graduated, would be what about uh the uh coffee? In the high school.
Um but you know, as of right now, we haven't addressed the 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 uh that the coffee shop that's at the high school. Um that's going to be an ongoing discussion. We try to figure out, uh you know, are we able to continue to offer that? What does it look like and how can we, you know, socially distance?
Um also, any um uh any students with special dietary needs or gluten-free or any of that? As far as choices, will that cut down on that as well?
We um no, we we still, uh we have students that have tremendously different dietary needs and we will still try to meet those needs to the best of our ability. Um we will probably still, we will still have, you know, separate gluten-free options or potentially dairy-free options or nut-free, you know, yeah, peanut-free and nut-free options. So, yeah, I mean, we will continue to try to do those things to the best of our ability.
Other questions?
Um I would just say, from my own personal experience, seeing a dining system at large capacity have to shut down because of this and go to prepackaged and and delivered. And um you know, you're going to see your packaging costs uh and recycling and and trash really almost double. And um but you, you know, there's opportunity there to repurpose staff. Uh but as far as going from bulk food to individual, it's it's, that's, we're going to take a huge hit there.
Yeah, it's it's definitely going to be a challenge for us. So this is the part where we move on to staff training expectations and I get to uh stop talking for a while. Um and uh turn it over to Dave. He's going to be taking the next few slides as it relates to staff training expectations and then moving into more of the instructional model of our our plan and kind of the different, different approaches that we have. So Dave, I will go ahead and turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Uh yeah, so staff training expectations, we really are taking the work we put together for the staff training for summer school and then translating that forward to what it will look like um for our return to fall. Uh so there'll be the, obviously, whatever plan is ultimately approved by the board, it will be everyone's responsibility to go through that, but then there'll be protocols and training to help people operationalize that. As as I think our discussion tonight illustrates, all of these um different aspects of how we respond in this new environment take on different meaning to different people in different roles. So that will um all be part of that training. When we get into the general expectations, you can see the physical distancing of no less than six feet whenever possible. Um that we've already talked about, the face coverings, and then we've got the hand washing in there. That's been a really neat thing, although this is staff training, I just want to mention another one of these little silver lining moments. When we're working with our students, every one of our students now that's gone through summer school has received really explicit training on how to appropriately wash your hands. It's one of those things, we always knew it was important, but it wasn't until we're in the face of a global pandemic that we stopped, slowed down and realized that if we institutionalize some of these things, they become that much more impactful. Um there's very specific cleaning and disinfecting protocols. Jim Stasek and his team have worked on all of that. And then we've got the um screening that we've talked about. Tracy's done a tremendous job on all of this, the the training. Uh we've really followed her lead on the majority of the work with staff training. Um and then also this next slide, when we get into, if you could flip to the next slide there. Um what do you do if you've been exposed? Um we're dealing with this right now. Again, one of the, um it's an odd thing to call a benefit, but we get to practice some of these protocols to make sure that they all make sense. Um we've had, we've had staff members that have been exposed. We've had staff members that have been symptomatic and we work through the protocol um as it stated here. It's really important that we also keep dialogue open. Um this is one of those things that until you have to apply it, you can forget the details. So there's a lot of conversation happening, a lot of phone calls to make sure that everyone is in the loop and everyone will be um trained on all of that. Now we'll get into some of the fun stuff here when we get into instruction. Um what we're going to lay out today is the recommendation for essentially two specific models for instruction with an um alternative um uh way to access one of them. So the first one is onsite, in-person instruction. This is what we would describe as our typical instructional model. Students come to the school, they're all there, they receive instruction. But as we know, there is no typical this year. So even though this model is designed on um one hundred percent of the students, or for the most part, one hundred percent of the students being in the schools, um there's a lot of different things that would happen. First of all, teachers and students would follow their typical schedule in this model. Um we're already making changes to the classroom design, the physical design to maximize physical distancing. Um there are learning experiences that may not translate well to this new environment. They may need to be modified or completely removed from the instructional sequence if there's just no way to do them um while instituting our mitigation strategies. And then obviously, all the mitigation protocols and expectations would be followed. Um recess is one that I think has has come up tonight. We'll finalize those plans in August. Um recess presents its uh an entirely different set of challenges. So that's sort of one um one end of the spectrum. If we go to the next slide, this is what we call individual distance learning. Um the language here is very specific. So we have onsite, in-person, individual distance learning. You'll notice the word virtual is not in that description. And the reason we're not using the word virtual is virtual to us means something that's intended and designed to be delivered virtually. The learning experience isn't what you would typically have onsite and then just delivered online. It's designed differently. Individual distance learning is the opportunity for a student or a family to choose or in some cases be directed by a public health official, not to participate onsite, but still have that opportunity to participate from a distance, from their computer, essentially getting direct access as to what's happening in the classroom and then um being um in a synchronous environment. When we say synchronous, we mean real time. That is what's happening. Uh the teacher's delivering the instruction in real time. The student and the teacher are online at the same time. We will use Google Classroom as our primary go-to LMS or learning management system, which is the um the warehouse for all things instruction and curriculum. Individual distance learning plans will be developed collaboratively with administrators, teachers, teacher leaders and families. This is incredibly important and we've learned so much with the work we've done thus far with our Virtual Learning Academy. It's very important to find out specifically what the needs of the family or the student in this case would be and to develop a plan to meet those needs. As an example, we could have a family that says, you know what, I'm not comfortable giving the full plan having my child participate in the edu- educational experience onsite. I want to engage in this individual distance learning. But we might find out that it's only music and in the cafeteria where there's a level of discomfort. Well, we can work around that and make sure that it's not an all or nothing. Um having said that, there will be some parameters around this because what we know would not be um a a beneficial system for students or for the teacher is if they're bouncing in and out from the onsite to the individual distance learning back and forth. So we're looking at some parameters around that um in terms of the the number of times they can switch between the models. Um obviously, if it's directed by public health, it will happen as much as it needs to happen. Uh but the what this will do, this will allow teachers to deliver their core curricular expectations, all the learning experiences without having to create two completely separate models. So again, that's individual distance learning. What will, uh um I think it'd probably work best if I get through the last model and then open up for questions. I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions um and thoughts about these models. So the last model is what we call virtual learning. Virtual learning is um obviously what we would describe as something that is designed to be delivered online. Different than distance learning, it's not just looking at what, looking what's happening and participating in the onsite experience, but from a distance. It's something that's designed to be delivered virtually. Um when we use virtual learning in this context, we describe situations that would only take place for entire classrooms, grade levels or schools that would be closed. Um and what we, what I mean by that is when we're tracking the data, we have our metrics defined, we may run into a situation where an individual school is presenting data to suggest that it would be in the best interest of the students and staff to close that school for a short time. If that's the case, then they would transition into a virtual learning environment. Um the decision to close the building um may come internally. Um the decision to close the building um may come internally, may come externally if that should take place. But that's how that plan would work. In terms of daily instruction. As all students would essentially become virtual learners in whatever site would be um affected. Again, the majority of instruction would be synchronous or real time, but not all. And what I what I mean by not all is we're meeting with each and every curricular group. At every level throughout the last couple of weeks and going into the next couple of weeks. We're calling them return to learn meetings. We have teacher representation in each one of those meetings. We have at the high school, it's department heads, the middle school, it's their PLC leads, at the elementary level. It's their committee members um that represent the various curricular level, the curricular teams. Um for the most part, Lisa Scoin and Ivy Wheeler are leading these meetings, doing an absolutely amazing job. I'll tell you what, you you're hired as the two new assistant directors of teaching and learning and thrust into this new environment. It's daunting, but they're doing a great job and they're learning so much just by being um essentially forced, for lack of a better word. To really dig into the details right off the bat, doing a fantastic job with that. Um so that's the overall view of virtual learning. What we know is that there would be attendance. There would be the typical assessments as much as possible. Some might need to be um slightly modified. Uh the schedule would for the most part follow a typical school schedule. Um this would not be a situation where there would be um work that's done on the side. And if a student chooses or family chooses to engage with the teacher, they would do so. It would be very scheduled and again synchronous. So that's a quick look at the three models um that we're looking at right now. And obviously there's sort of, it's sort of a spectrum from the all online to all virtual, a lot of variation in between. Uh with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Questions, I guess my first question you could address Dave is, I know that DPI. Has put out, you know, certain recommendations and understanding that. Their edict is coming out of Madison, which is a lot different environment than St. Croix County. And they're talking about recommending, you know, two days a week with half of your student body. Or in some instances, a third of the student body going, you know, one day a week or something and then having this combination. So um what's the thought there with starting five days a week at both the elementary and secondary levels?
Yeah, it's a it's a great question and you're right, Jamie. There's a lot of conversation about different models out there and those models definitely have merit. Um when we considered this model, we were keeping um the workload and the feasibility of delivering. Um for teachers at the forefront. Um those other models definitely again have merit, but present their own set of challenges. So whenever you split up your class and you're split into two, you essentially have kids that are with you one day and kids that are. On that same day, the other half of the class that would be at home. The question is what's happening at home? We would have to go to an asynchronous model because obviously the teacher would be engaged with the students they're working with onsite. Um that presents some challenges. And we also need to guarantee that we're keeping the pace of the instruction. The sequence is what it would be called in the curricular world is moving at the correct pace. That we don't end up slowing everything down by half because we have these two models. They're definitely worth considering. Um and I I think. If we look at, if we look at the way we would start the school year. Um let's just say hypothetically, we start with one hundred percent onsite with the mitigation strategies. And if we would do that, then we'd have to understand very clearly what metrics do we look at and what thresholds do we consider? If we would start backing things off. One of the questions that I think would be very difficult to answer, and this is not to suggest that we don't explore it. But if we have data that suggests we need to change our course. It would be difficult for me to see data that would suggest we change our course that would say you should now go to this split schedule. And um not go to a partial closure for a short time. Um again, not to say that you don't do that. What I have seen, most districts that are choosing for the hybrid model of a split schedule. Plan on starting that way and then ramping up or ramping down depending on how the um what the data is telling us as we move forward. Uh so I think the 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 most important thing from a teaching and learning perspective. And not that you need to provide necessarily definitive answers today, but if that's a model that um you'd like us to explore, we can definitely do that. I will tell you, we've been exploring it on the side because we want to make sure that we are on top of any model. That might eventually become uh the way we go. So we've been looking at it and make sure that we have a strong understanding of what that um. What that would look like if that's where we go.
Okay, um Heather has a question.
So thanks, Dave. Um can you the the help me understand a little bit of the difference between two and three? Is it really the um wh- whom is the instruction targeting? So that in the individual distance learning, the teacher is teaching to a a group of students who are present. And there then might be students kind of watching and participating but from home. But the the delivery is designed with the intention of in-person participation, whereas the virtual learning. The delivery is designed with the intention of remote participation. Is that the real difference there?
Yes, yeah, that that's an that's an accurate description, Heather. One, I'll give you an example just to. So you can understand how we would operationalize this. We will actually physically tape off the part of the room. That would be accessible via video. So the teacher would know when I'm here, the students that are participating online. Will see what's going on. During the instructional um sequence during that day. There may be times when it, when the instruction translates really well to seeing what's happening on the screen. There may be other times when it doesn't work as well, but even when the teacher's not providing direct instruction. Those participating at from individual distance learning, maybe in a separate group doing some work. Or they may be participating with a student that's onsite. So you'd have a distance learner working with an onsite learner. But you're right, it's generally designed around the onsite instruction with others participating. The the reason we use the term distance learning, so back in the day before the whole concept of virtual learning, distance learning was a thing. We had distance learning labs, which would be a classroom with a camera where maybe the teacher was elsewhere. You'd bring in um like a special instructor that had a um a certain skill set that we didn't have onsite. So that's sort of how we view this. So it's participating um a little less directly. When we move into virtual, everything is designed very specifically to translate well to that virtual environment.
So just a follow up question, Dave, then. So if there are enough students and families who are not comfortable with in-person instruction. We could end up in a situation where pretty much every classroom is set up and is. Is both teaching kids who are present and teaching kids who are not.
Yes, and even if those numbers don't end up high, just because there's the likelihood that we could have a student that. Um is asymptomatic and very like or could be negative, but still is ordered not to participate in school. Because of close exposure, that sort of thing. So every core classroom be set up from the beginning, well, uh a little caveat on there. Um to be able to deliver this way. We've ordered up cameras for all certified staff so we can implement this. Um from the beginning, but some may be a little late in coming, but yeah, we would essentially be ready to ramp up right away. Uh another thing to your point though, Heather, is that when we look at, when we talk about data. Obviously, there's the big data, the macro data, and I'd say the biggest we would look at is, um well, we're looking at national data, but. More likely state data and then more likely than that county data. Then we get into um community data, but to me, the most important data that we would be tracking is our in-school data. Looking at rates among our staff members and our students and making the adjustments accordingly. So if we see those numbers climb, we may have to take that individual distance learning model. And essentially translate it almost to the hybrid model because let's say you get to twelve kids in a class. Well, essentially what we've created then is a form of that AB schedule, just without flipping it. You've got about half your class here, half your class not here, but we'll also have to look at allocation of resources and allocation of staff. If we end up with the numbers that would suggest that we could carve out virtual sections, we may need to do that as well. So that's something that we're keeping um on the docket as a potential solution.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
Just curious about the individual distance learning and the grading. Is that pass fail? Is, don't know that I saw anything there on the grading side.
It I agree. That's a good question and we should probably clarify that because we call it out in the other one. The intent is that all grading would match the grading practices that we would have onsite, that there's not a special grading scale. We would not be exploring a pass fail. That was done knowing that we were going to have significant inequities. And um and some access issues that we wouldn't be able to necessarily mitigate. In that emergency situation in the spring. With the increased time we have to plan and the data we're able to collect. We um are much more confident that we're going to be able to offer an equitable experience for all kids. And thus not requiring a modified grading scale.
Right, Kerry?
Uh I guess along that same line, Dave, with the virtual learning, if if you know, it does have to shut down um. The in-person has to shut down. By saying the majority of instruction will be synchronous. You're confident that uh for a family with multiple kids that that those technological challenges. Or internet challenges have been um eliminated for the fall?
Huh, um no, not eliminated, definitely not. It's. We we know that even internet service providers, not dealing with the school district at all, are being taxed. Um or were in the spring. It's better now in the summer, but we're being taxed just with their bandwidth and their ability to, because there's just a lot more use. And it's um it's re- it's bandwidth intensive use, a lot of video, live streaming that takes up a lot of bandwidth. So there were challenges that way, but our survey is going to get to that. So in the the first iteration of our survey, that helped us identify students that would need support, additional device, hotspot, that sort of thing. Was all geared along the idea that secondary students had their device, so we knew they were ready to go. But elementary would need to be sharing devices, but we were basing it on one device per family that had an elementary student. If we go to a situation where we have a lot of students, all levels participating virtually and it's all synchronous. There will be a greater demand for devices. Um when I say I'm not, I'm confident we'll be able to get the devices. I'm confident that we'll be able to identify families that need increased access through our hotspot. Um I can't say with any certainty that the internet service providers are going to be able to handle everything we'd be bringing at them. But they're going through the same thing right now. Every internet service provider, they're having meetings like this, or what are we going to do to ramp up? And make sure that we can deliver um what we need to deliver. There's, w- we also may need to look at how we change um how we schedule things. There may be something that we would have to say maybe by level or by content area. That your video intensive days are going to be Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays. To break that up, if we find that we're peaking, we can monitor bandwidth um very regularly internally. So what we have as a district, but we don't necessarily know what demand we'd be putting on different families.
All right. Is that answer your question, Kerry? Okay, um I just had um, so an observation based on the emails that we received. You know, going into this meeting, it sounds like there's going to be some families who feel, don't feel safe sending their kids. Even with a mani- you know, with a mandatory mask policy. They're going to want to maybe opt for this individual distance learning or virtual learning. Then there's going to be the group who um don't want. Their kids to have to wear masks, so they're going to be able to have the opportunity for individual distance learning, virtual learning. And then there'll be a group of kids who are either symptomatic, whether that's with colds, influenza or COVID-like symptoms. And there's going to be a group of kids who may be asymptomatic, but they might have been exposed and need to be quarantined. So we're anticipating there's going to be a percentage that's going to be doing this. We just don't know at this point whether it's sixty percent or twenty percent, correct?
Yeah, that's that's absolutely correct. And um once, once we have our plan locked in. We'll have another survey that's going out. Um student services, teaching and learning, and Tracy, we'll we'll all be working. To make sure that that survey provides families with a detailed description of the decisions made. So they can make that decision. Granted, that's the decision at that point in time. It can change. Situations can change, the data can change and that will influence those those overall numbers. But we'll at least be dialed in with a better understanding of where we might end up in terms of families' interest in having their kids go to school. And we looked at the first survey, we're tracking about seventy-five percent of families said, given reasonable mitigation strategies, we'd feel comfortable. That was a very high number, but what we know is there was a big question, what are those reasonable mitigation strategies? In large part, I view this plan as defining those. So once we have an approved plan, we can say, and when we say reasonable mitigation strategies. Here they are. This is what we think they are, so families can then make the appropriate choice for their circumstances.
And um. The other thing that I wanted you to just distinguish here, because we spent so much time over the last year talking about our the uh virtual academy. And despite all the talk that we had at the board level, there's a lot of people in the community that don't know that we have, you know, that. Option and saw comments about, well, I guess we'll have to enroll my kids in X Y Z school districts. Virtual learning program because they have an online learning program. So uh A, just talk about that a little bit. But how this model going into the twenty twenty-one is going to be distinguished from maybe. How our virtual learning academy might have looked going in and then. Um you know, how it will be put to use.
Sure, yeah, tha- and that's a very important distinction. And really, there's two sets of distinctions. One is the distinction between what this is and what the virtual learning academy is. That's one. But there's also, and I think the more important distinction, what the virtual learning academy is and what last spring was. Those are far, far apart because that was a last minute emergency plan, not personalized. Um a- and and I don't want to minimize, there was some excellent work that was put into that plan and teachers did an amazing job of delivering. In really unpleasant circumstances and they made the best of it. And and we we are still hearing, teachers are still hearing compliments about that experience. But we know it was far less than ideal. The cornerstone of the virtual learning academy. Is the work that Sarah does in conjunction with counselors, teachers and administrators. When they sit down with families and they say, what are we trying to build here? What needs are we trying to meet and how might a virtual or a hybrid experience help meet those needs? That's the power. Sarah does a great job with that. Some of the um language that's shared in this plan was really taken from that idea. We need to sit down and identify those needs and build a plan that meets the needs of individual families. Now, there is some crossover with virtual learning academy and what we might offer. So as we said, if numbers get really high for those opting for virtual. We may need to look at carving out sections of virtual instruction. If we do that, it would be in our best interest to develop our own curriculum and deliver it virtually. When I say develop, it's really translated because it's already developed for onsite, but then translate that to the virtual world. So instead of having students sign up for Algebra One Wisconsin Virtual. Have our own version of Algebra One that can be delivered onsite or virtually by our teachers. Um so that's something that we're looking at right now. So I would put the virtual learning academy. That really sort of exists as um another stop on that spectrum from fully virtual to fully onsite. Uh the majority of the kids that we have participating in the virtual learning academy are not one hundred percent virtual. They they're in a blended model anyway. We view this as um an opportunity to sort of reconceptualize that idea of a blended model.
Thank you for emphasizing that, Dave, because I think a lot of parents are confusing what they experienced in the last ten weeks of the last school year. And expect that that's what online learning is going to look like going into this school year. And you're you're clearly trying to make sure that they um are disavowed of that notion.
Yes, if you're listening out there, families, yes, it will not be the same.
All right, uh I want to get to Bob, so he's had his hand up. Thank you for your patience.
Just Dave, um I think it's important that that we communicate that family because St. Croix Central did have a have a head start in getting their. Online learning before we did. And I have heard some things in in the community about, well, I'll sign them up for online learning at St. Croix Central. And uh but they still want to be part of, you know, their student, be part of our band system or football team or whatever. I talked with Nick about it. Uh once you go to St. Croix Central, you are not in our district anymore. So that is very important, I think, to get that messaged out to the parents as well. That they won't be able to pick and choose between two neighboring districts. Um also um with uh assuming that we're gonna have students being or staff being quarantined uh with with symptoms, um will our online learning will is if they're on onsite learning and they are not able to be in our school because they're quarantined. Uh I'm assuming there'll be a fast path to get them on the online learning uh quickly and temporarily, is that?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, if they if if they are asymptomatic and they're quarantined because of exposure, but they're well enough to to do work. It would be instantaneous, we could have them set up um right away. What the plan is that teachers will, once we get this rolling, teachers will have um several days of instruction. Already planned and in Google Classroom, ready to go at the drop of a hat, so we can flip the switch. There's a lot of talk about um looking at covid responses like a dial and not a switch. This is the one time we're using the switch analogy, that we can go back and forth flexibly as needed.
Thank you, and Heather?
Yeah, so Jamie, um I I was gonna bring up your, what you brought up about really differentiating between the two, between individual distance learning as proposed in this plan. And then the Hudson Virtual Learning Academy, um I think it's really important for parents who are thinking this either, um you know, as you pointed out. Who are thinking about it now, not 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 as a a service if a kid ne- needs to be quarantined or is sick, but as a from the beginning of the year. I'm not gonna send my kid to school, the benefit to the individual distance learning is that if the situation changes. Your kid will be right along with that class and could start going to school four weeks from now, six weeks from now if the situation's changed. And just um you know, that's having had experience last year with the virtual academy with my daughter. Um that's not the case when you're enrolled in the virtual learning academy, it's a great program, but it's you know, it's not one-on-one aligned with the classes that are taking place at Hudson High School. So you're you're really making a semester-long, I would say, commitment, so. So Dave, who i- if there's a parent listening or, you know, when we communicate with parents. If they're thinking that they're gonna be one of those families that is not gonna be comfortable with having their kid in person and they wanna try to figure out which of these two options is best for them, um it do they talk with their 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 kid's advisor, do they go to Sarah Instrom Road, what where's the best place to start that conversation, if that's where a family's at?
Yep, I think the best place to start is with building administration, because they're, first of all, they're the ones who are gonna be most accessible, especially in these summer months when people are making decisions and they'll be able to pull in all the right people. Um I talked to Sarah earlier today and she's had quite a few calls of people just with, you know, the rumblings throughout the community, asking questions. And and I I think everyone here did a nice job of pointing out some of those differences between the virtual learning academy. And what virtual learning would look like here or the distance learning. Another thing to point out is obviously we just launched the virtual charter school. And if you remember, the purpose of the charter school is to allow open enrollment in. So really, we're just talking about the Hudson Virtual Learning Academy, talking about our resident students and providing the best possible plan for them. Within there, where we where we really think we set ourselves apart versus a family making the choice to leave to another district. Is the full array of services we have, especially in Aaron's department and student services. Between counseling and social work and some of the other things that may help create a more well-rounded and complete educational experience, as well as those extracurriculars and co-curriculars that may um enhance the overall experience. That becomes challenging if you enroll to another district where transportation becomes a limit.
Right, a- and Dave, just one final question, I know that um last year with rare exception, the virtual learning academy really was a high school program, was nine twelve, is that gonna continue to be the focus area of that program or is that expanding?
Um it's still the focus of the program, um we, you know, we do look at middle school students and the appropriateness of of placement in the virtual learning academy on a case-by-case basis. Um but again, it gets that really individualized family conversation with counselors, Sarah, other leaders to make sure we're putting together the best program. Um but we, yeah, we default to a high school program.
Got it, thank you.
Uh yeah, Dave, um on the individual learning, distance learning. Um when when I read this, I'm thinking um how it would work really well with high school and middle school. Um will there be other modifications with this plan for elementary level? Given some of them have less skills, you know, in terms of understanding uh just that bare space and distant space and, you know, in-person space.
Yeah, that's that's a great question, you know, in in some ways, that relationship is slightly inverted in that it's at the elementary level that an asynchronous environment is really problematic. Because y- you're you're placing the onus of understanding the directions, either on the student or on the parent. Where in the synchronous environment, even if it's um individualized distance learning, that student still has access to the teacher, they can still raise their hand. They can still ask questions, they can still be directly engaged in that experience. They can be engaged at at the elementary level, small group instruction is a cornerstone of a lot of what makes for powerful student learning and growth. They can still participate in small group instruction virtually, so it actually translates relatively well. Where it becomes somewhat, I I I would say challenging, a challenge that we'll need to work to overcome and we do that in the return to learning plans that we have with everyone. Um it's the transition between a whole group lesson, small group, individual conversations, all those things. A um all classrooms are dynamic environments, elementary classrooms are especially dynamic environments. Um in large part due to the abbreviated attention span of our youngest learners, so teachers are changing what they do all the time. And because of that, um thinking of participating via distance and watching on a screen. We have to be very cognizant of that, we know that um this idea is stressful for teachers. And we're aware of that, we get it, we understand, we'll support the heck out of them as we move into this sort of situation. But it's the idea of doing what you typically do with a classroom full of five-year-olds, twelve-year-olds or sixteen-year-olds. Suddenly, we feel like we're in everyone's dining room and their entire family is seeing what's going on. That that can be a um a stressful situation, but my point there is that we need to really specifically design our experiences, so we can maximize the benefit. And then mitigate the risks as we're talking about mitigating risks. The risks associated to just saying, I'll just put a camera there, everything will be fine, we need to be very thoughtful as we work through the details.
Okay, other comments or questions about these three slides and it's kind of the how we deliver the instruction?
Jamie, I have a question and I guess it it might go back to you a bit, Nick, but um I'm getting some real-time questions from 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 folks. Um that are making me think, um so if there are parents for whom their discomfort with sending their children is not knowing when things will change. You know, not feeling comfortable that, you know, I know that, okay, I'm comfortable with masks and distancing right now, but I might not be if things got worse. You know, when would the district decide, you know what, we need to close down? Or or on the other spectrum, parents who are saying, I'm not okay with this masking, so when when would you stop? I mean, I realize that's really hard, because as we talked about earlier, there's not a single indicator, but um kind of how do we, how do we respond to those to those parents?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we look at this, there is not a a single data point, you know, as we look at when do we open or when do we decide to close. Um you know, for example, we've had this conversation with public health quite a bit and it's you know, if all of a sudden there's an outbreak, let's say in the nursing facility, the nursing home in New Richmond, the county nursing home. And there's fifty or sixty cases, does that necessarily mean that we should close school at River Crest? And so, you know, it is going to be an ongoing discussion, we don't have real great, um well, if it hits us, it hits us. You know, we do have the the um the different indicators the state has given us. Uh as to what that looks like, um but we're we're really still working on that, because they still are countywide indicators. And, you know, we're really, we've even had conversations as as superintendents um in the county. Cause we meet at least every week, if not more, you know, if there's an outbreak in Glenwood City, does that mean Hudson should close? Or if there's an outbreak in Hudson, should Glenwood City close? And so i- it's just, i- it is unprecedented on on some of the stuff. We don't have real, real solid information at this point. Um you know, so I think that, you know, we hope to have more of those indicators available prior to the start of the school year. Um but it's it's um it's something we just can't say, okay, once we hit this threshold of five percent gone or ten percent gone or something like that. It automatically triggers this, because right now with the countywide data and such, and the fact that we have ninety thousand residents in our county. Um what could be happening in one end of the county may not have as much of an impact on us. Uh and same thing with the state, I mean, we know that there was a tremendous uh amount of cases and and things going on in the southeast part of the state. And then it went up to the northeast part of the state, but never quite exploded, knock on wood, you know, in the west western part of the state. Quite to the same extent all over, so um it will be an ongoing discussion. Uh and as soon as we have some of those, you know, key indicators, if we do this, we're gonna do this, we definitely will get those out to parents. You know, right now, it's 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 more of an ongoing conversation with public health and uh area superintendents and things. You know, what are reasonable risks that we're we're willing to take?
Cause the assumption is there will be a point when we will say, okay, we can stop wearing masks now, just right now, we don't yet know what that indicator is.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, I I think, you know, uh I don't like wearing a mask probably any more than anybody else and I'm sure nobody up here does. And so we obviously wanna get to a point where we're we don't have to wear them. So I mean, if there are people concerned that we're gonna make kids wear masks for the next ten years, I hope that's not the case. I mean, I I think, you know, we're gonna start to see that dial turn back. Um you know, our our biggest thing is going to be looking at, you know, are we getting ahead of the, are we getting ahead of this? Are we having issues in our schools, what does that look like? Um the other data points that we won't have until we actually open is, what does it look like in our buildings? You know, as we start to track not just covid, but influenza, seasonal allergy, you know, tracking a variety of things. Once we have those data points, we'll be able to have a better metrics on 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 some of those things as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, any other comments on that? Thank you, Dave, for that, now, next up is special education.
Yep, so Aaron is gonna is gonna take the lead on these uh um next slide.
Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
So, okay, our plan for special ed really closely mirrors the teaching and learning plan intentionally. Um so that to the greatest extent possible, um we can ensure equitable access to curriculum for students with disabilities. So a big focus is to maintain our responsibility um to maintain or to provide special education services. And being able to adapt um to changing learning environments from onsite to the distance learning to those virtual experiences um to best meet the needs of each student. We know that not one of these models is gonna be the best fit for all. Um so really being flexible in terms of how we're providing service and working collaboratively with IEP teams and families. Dave covered the teaching and learning plan in such depth that that's really um what we're following and so that made this um mirroring that made a lot of sense for us.
That was a nice way of saying Dave Randle.
Any questions on the special ed piece to this?
Makes sense. That makes sense.
Alright, so the the next slide is on instructional resources and a little bit on communication. I'll take this real quickly, so first of all, hats off to our IT department. They've done an amazing job and we we talked about some of the big structural things that have gone into place that have been really supportive. And they're incorporated in here, but I wanna take a chance just to recognize the work that the technicians have done. Their world has changed just as everyone else has, they became family communicators, they became professional developers. They work in a completely different way as we needed to rely more heavily on um on technology to deliver our educational experience. So um they've really, they've really stepped up, Jen has done a great job leading that charge. Um Andrea Newman, who's not a technician but works with Skyward Nardata. Every time we come out with one of these surveys, she's working closely with Tracy, making sure that everything matches and and does what it needs to do. Just overall, a fantastic response from the team. Um so some of the things the instructional technology department is able to do are listed there. A- and as I said, they support families directly, which is great, that again, it's a role that they didn't normally play and and stepped right up, did a great job with that. And they'll also work directly with teachers regardless of what sort of instructional model we'll be engaged in. Um I wanna touch just briefly on teacher-family communication. Um one of the the key aspects of what made our spring as successful as it could be was the work teachers did communicating directly with families. Some really heartwarming stories of conversations that teachers had with family members that they wouldn't normally have. Because you've got this regular contact with kids, but because they didn't, they would reach out, have a conversation in a different way that they wouldn't normally have. And it opened up doors that they never would have imagined and and there's a lot of those stories. Um and teacher-family communication will continue to be really essential during any of our virtual or hybrid models that we would be delivering. The one thing is, there there will not be the same level of access, like long extended office hours. Because teachers will be teaching a full schedule in any of the models that um we should have. But obviously, and goes without saying, but uh important to emphasize nonetheless, that if there are situations that require immediate attention. Families should reach out directly to their school principal and they'll get the support they need.
Question on this slide though, Sue.
I I'm sorry, I just wanted to go back to Aaron, I just have one quick question. Aaron, uh do you anticipate that um our special education students are likely to utilize onsite um learning as a preference?
I think there's such a wide spectrum of needs within our students who are served on it through an IEP. I think some may um choose that preference. Um I think some of our learners struggled with the virtual environment and really did um do do better in and onsite. Um so it really depends on the students and how they learn best.
Yes.
Mr. President, yeah, so David, I'm 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 curious, and I would agree that there was a lot of teacher-family communication. Um for some people that was great, um I think from other families, I heard that it was overwhelming. And they wished there was a way to coordinate that communication, that that fam- that parents just felt like they they couldn't keep up with, especially at the middle school, you know, high school level, when you've got, you know, seven different instructors as opposed to one primary instructor, have we found an approach or a technology that's gonna help help streamline that communication moving into the fall?
Now, I'll try again, I think what we would do to streamline that, and yeah, we we definitely heard that as well. Um we would rely on advisors to be the key point of contact for individual. Um more of the, and Aaron's gonna talk a little about social emotional support. So that side of things where direct contact, more initiated by families to teachers, which is a more typical model. Would likely be the predominant way that um we'd offer that support. At the same time, we don't wanna lose sight of the fact that just a good friendly phone call of sharing some great news goes a long way.
Yeah.
And we wanna keep that going.
Okay, well, and I assume the fact that we're doing in-person and uh remote instruction, that is I keep not being able to say that word synchronous, um that would eliminate of the need for a lot of the emails that went out in the spring. Because a lot of those emails were letting parents know what kids should do and if kids are actually in class or even remotely participating. They'll get that information from their classroom experience, right?
Y- yes, absolutely, and a lot of that communication was the poor teachers translating the stuff that we sent out the night before, like, here are the new expectations. And then they had to scramble to get that all out there, so a more comprehensive plan should help mitigate that.
Great, thanks.
Sue?
Uh yeah, one quick question, uh David, do we also provide IT support to teachers and or uh whoever needs it on the weekends?
I'm sorry, you you broke up a little bit there, Sue, what was that?
Uh do we also continue to have um IT support available on weekends for teachers and perhaps students?
Um good question, we don't have direct IT support, but they can still submit their help desk tickets. Um the technicians only work Monday through Friday, that's not to say that if there's um an emergency of That's not to say that if there's, um, an emergency of some sort, they wouldn't have access. But we're trying to do a guest, our best to protect sometime, because there needs to be a time for teachers to shut down as well to say, okay, I need to walk away from this. Um, and teachers are notorious for being incredibly helpful and will keep giving and giving and giving. And, um, we just want to make sure that we protect that.
Any other questions on this? All right. Next slide up is the social emotional support. I assume, is this Erin?
Yes.
Yep, this is me. Um, social, emotional learning and mental health continues to be a focus for us, especially during this challenging time. It's sort of been a hot topic in our community. And I think one of the challenges we have is that we didn't have a great way to measure the need. Um, when we were at, when we were at home. Um, and so counselors at all levels are working on, um, surveys to families and students that will go out in early August. So that we can start planning for supporting students as they transition back to school before school starts. Um, so I think that will really help us determine that level of need. Um. Also in our conversations about instruction in teaching and learning and in student services is really focusing on building those positive relationships. And that sense of belonging, no matter what environment we're in, whether it's onsite, distance or virtual learning. But keeping that connection with kids, we know is really important. Um, I've been coordinating with our co-located mental health, um, providers. Um, so that we can be working planned so that those services provided onsite as was virtually. They were able to switch to a virtual model pretty quickly this spring. Um, so students didn't have that gap in service, um, if they chose to continue that. So those are things that we'll continue to work on, um, as we plan for fall.
Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate again on, on this whole presentation, which I assume this is going to be put on the school website.
Yes, uh, the presentation's been linked to the, uh, board agenda, but then we will also have up in the banner, uh, at the top of our website. We'll have a link to this, uh, document. So people will be able to easily access it.
And I just appreciate that on the left side where it says, um, you know, the, what, what the recommendations are based on. And that, you know, you've got multiple sources there for, it's the School Counselor Association as well as, um, the Collaborative for Social and Emotional Learning. So I, I really appreciate that. Yes, Sue.
Well, I just wanted to go back to school counselors. Uh, I know we've been adding counselors. And then it seems to me we had a discussion not too long ago about, um, I, we just, distribution isn't the right word. But we kind of identified, uh, coun- counselors to be more the, um, you know, uh, helping with students planning their careers and so on. And then there were counselors for social and emotional needs. So have we been strengthening our social and emotional needs counselors?
We, we definitely have. And adding the counselors at both levels helps counselors to balance both of those responsibilities. Um, so that one doesn't have to fall away, um, to meet the needs of the other. Um, high school and middle school have both, um, adopted a model that best meets the needs of their building. Um, we, we realize that one model may not be the best for both of those levels. Um, and so still working through the logistics of what that will look like. But those teams are being incredibly thoughtful along with their, um, administrators in that building about how to best reach our, all of our students.
Right, Heather?
Yeah, Erin, thank you. I was just gonna say, I, I wouldn't want anyone listening to think that, oh, there's only one slide on this, so it's kind of an afterthought. I mean.
I will tell you.
All the words here are continue and, you know, I mean, that this is something that's been a focus across the district and not just with the counselors. But with staff at all levels and there are new things, um, and things being strengthened. So do we have room to grow? Of course. But, um, I, I, I want, I, I think people should know that this is an area of support. And, and you're right, there's a lot of conversation at the community level around the increased percentage of kids who are really anxious. Are, are anxious about going back to school. And so to know that we have a plan in place to help provide just kind of mental wellness support. But also to, um, to really be identifying and connecting those, those kids with resources, I think is really important to, um, to understand. So thank you, Erin.
Yeah.
Right. Any other comments? Otherwise moving on then to school age care and I assume Tracy's on.
That's correct. Yes. So, um, school age care remains an essential service for many of our elementary families. So looking at, um, what that service would look like if we were in person, uh, very similar to how that program operates. Uh, during a typical year with the exception of adding face coverings or masks. Um, we did start implementing in the spring when we continued to serve, um, essential workers. Uh, this concept of not having families come into the space to pick up their kids, but having the check-in and checkout right at the door. So some slight alter, alterations of how we're implementing the program during, um, in-person. And then the second slide really takes you to, um, that virtual option. And would be, would be dependent on what, um, the county and Wisconsin Department of Children and Family Services allows us as far as numbers and whatnot. Um, I, even if we do go into a virtual setting, um, we're likely to have families who will still need care. Um, we would likely depend on the model that we're using right now with pods of children. So that there's no co-mingling. Um, the staff have done an amazing job to implement that this summer. Um, being flexible and creative. So I'm not sure the kids really are experiencing a different program from what they typically have. Um, even though they're in much smaller groups. So we, we've learned that that, that model can be very effective in doing all the things that we want to do with kids.
Any questions about school age care? And I note that, uh, I mean, this is one area that you've had some experience with, um, you know, already since, uh, July 6th. Um, or was it July 13th?
We've actually been operating since March in school age care. So we had the essential, uh, serving essential workers. And then starting July 6th with all families.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions on this? All right. Moving ahead, slide 22 would be athletics.
So athletics are, are still, um, one of those areas to be determined. Uh, and part of the reason is, is the WIA is going to be, I believe, weighing in on this, uh, more in the next few days. Um, they did just survey superintendents across the state, asking different questions. Uh, there have been different proposals from different groups across the state that, that, uh, involve moving sports seasons and activities that way. Um, one of the things that we can say is that if we, if we move forward with continuing to offer athletics. Um, you know, the things that, uh, we are going to consider as, you know, practices and competitions. You know, is the board going to feel comfortable moving forward with, with athletics? Uh, we're also going to be having to look at the shared use of equipment and, and spaces, locker rooms, other types of equipment. Um, obviously whether or not, if we do have competitions, who do we allow to watch those competitions as far as spectators? Travel concessions. So there's a, there's a variety of things that, that are coming into play that we're having some discussions about. But really, um, we're looking at, you know, wanting the WIA to take the lead on this, uh, on some of these things. They may end up, um, punting for lack of a, a bad pun, but, um, and saying, you know, school districts can decide if they want to play athletics or not. Uh, and so understand that, um, it may get thrown right back at the district, uh, as, as how we do things. You know, some of the challenges related to athletics are, obviously, I think when people think of fall sports, a lot of times they're thinking about the challenges that relate to football. And the contact and close contact with that. However, we have lots of sports in the fall. It's not just football. We also have swimming and diving and golf and tennis and cross-country and soccer and volleyball. And so, you know, that's where we're trying to understand, uh, is it an all or nothing proposition with the WIA? Is it move all, you know, cancel all or move all fall sports? Or is it selectively? And that conversation will be ongoing. Um, as of right now, uh, you know, kind of our direction has been, you know, let's plan to currently have it unless somebody says, you know, w- we shouldn't. Uh, whether it be the WIA or the board, if you guys have feedback or things that you want us to consider, we're definitely all ears as it relates to this. Um, it is, it is a challenging situation because obviously we want to, uh, we take, take pride in the health and safety of our, our kids and our staff. However, you know, we're balancing that with, you know, um, kids that get one senior year, one junior year. You know, whether it be athletics, activities, it doesn't matter, you know, what it is and, and trying to create opportunities for them if we can, you know, reasonable manner. So Sue.
Oh, I didn't even put up my hand.
Yeah.
You're divining my, uh, questions. Um, okay, so, uh, um, one of the sports that we have offsite, of course, is hockey. So does that facility ha- have, uh, protocols and things that we have to then to abide by? Or can we, do we have control of them? I know we have contracts, so that's one thing, but I just wondered how that's gonna, gonna go down.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we'll, we'll set our protocols for our coaches and our kids regardless of what the site is. And if sites can't meet those protocols or what we need them to meet, then we'll have to decide whether or not we can continue, um, doing those types of things. But, uh, hockey is going through some contact days that the WIA gave us in July, um, for all sports. Um, but right now hockey wouldn't be on the docket as far as the decision for fall sports, because it's, it's going to be a part of our winter sports programming. Uh, but, you know, we have gymnastics, which is also part of winter sports programming, which we, you know, technically we've used spa- other spaces in the past with that. Um, but most of the other sports fall on our school's property. Golf, obviously, would be one that's not. Golf's one of the easiest sports to social distance in, obviously for our kids and things like that. And so that's where it's, it's, it's really tough, because we, you know, we know that some sports are going to be really hard, uh, potentially to have. But does that, does that mean it's an all or nothing? Um, do we, do we say to our, our girls' golf team? Um, we don't, we don't think we can safely have football, so therefore we don't think we should have girls' golf. Uh, I, I don't think that's necessarily the best approach to go about it. I, I think personally, my recommendation is to look at it on a sport-by-sport basis. But it, it's probably going to be more of a decision based on conference and based on the state coming out and saying what we can and can't do.
Well, that does bring up the question of, uh, equity in sports though, with how the state looks at that, correct? I mean, if you cut out a hockey or a football, that's a huge number of male students not participating.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's kind of like when we, we canceled spring sports this year, there was a large percentage of kids, you know. Depending on how many are offered for each sport and which sport is being offered, you know, it will throw the gender balance into, um. Uh, potentially it'll off, you know, set it off one way or the other. So, uh, yeah, there's no doubt about it. I mean, you think about wrestling in, in the winter, um, and, you know, how, you know, what does that look like? Um, basketball, you know, um, yeah. So there's just, there's a variety of these things that are going to continue to come up. But well, I guess the thought is with this slide is just, it's an ongoing conversation before, uh, you know, as of right now, the seasons are, are still on. However, you know, that, that could change by then.
It's subject to change. I've been waiting for tennis to make a comeback for about 20 years. This might be the time, since it is safer than golf, they say. That's my pitch.
All right. Um, but all of this, just even having a slide on athletics is presuming that we're starting five days a week with face-to-face learning as a primary mode of instruction.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, it would be very difficult for us as an administration to recommend to you to go ahead, uh, with athletics and activities. And not bring all kids back every day. Um, because to say, you know, you need, for the academic part, which we believe is the most important part of the day. Um, you know, you can't be at school, but everybody can intermix for practice. All of a sudden, I think sends some mixed messages for us, uh, as we, as we work through some of those things. So, um, yeah. I would, I would say if, if the, if the board says, you know what, we really only want to bring them back half-time. I, I think then you'd really have to have a conversation about whether or not you could continue to offer, uh, extracurriculars at that point.
And speaking of extracurricular, that's our next slide on co-curricular, extracurricular. So any comments that would be different than, say, the athletics?
Well, I think, you know, I think the, the biggest thing, you know, the activities will follow their typical schedule as of right now. So we're talking about different clubs, groups, things like that. Um, all risk mitigation protocols, you know, and expectations will all, you know, be expected to be followed. Um, travel and competition restrictions may be required, you know, and that's the same thing with athletics. It may be that, you know, we can offer certain things, but maybe we don't travel. I mean, maybe it's, we're staying more local on things. Uh, the one thing that's different about activities. Uh, we may have some activities that are able to happen, even if we do go a hundred percent virtual, where some of the other things can't. And so, uh, certain clubs could still potentially meet virtually, uh, certain activities, you know, uh, could still do those things. So I think that's just something to kind of keep in mind. So we are, although we don't have a final answer on these things as of yet. I, we wanted people to understand that we are talking about them. We, this isn't off of our radar. It's very much on our radar. And trying to look at, you know, what are ways that we can do things, uh, with reasonable mitigation strategies. It goes back to our guiding principles that we talked about at the beginning. I know it's been a few hours, but, you know, we believe there is value in these activities. We believe there is value for our kids in these activities. Um, and, you know, we believe that, you know, our kids only have these experience, experiences so often in their life. And so if there are things that we can do to reasonably mitigate the risk and still offer things for kids, that's kind of where we're trying to push for. Um, as long as we, we feel it's reasonable. So.
And, and I guess this is, if nothing else, it just gives us the example, proves the point that this is not an easy, these are not easy decisions to make. And, and, uh, there's a lot of factors that go into them. And just not to single one out, but one, um, you know, co-curricular activity is the, um, you know, is choir. It's one of the things that we take great pride in, in this district, but yet singing is one of the most, uh, um, you know, the largest ways that virus can be exchanged, um, for people. And so, um, I mean, trying to do that in a reasonably safe way, are we gonna have kids singing through masks or, you know?
Yep. And, you know, and, you know, it may look differently, you know, we may, and we've already started to have those conversations with our choir instructors and our band instructors, our music instructors. And so, you know, that's, you know, Dave's done a great job in his team about, you know, it's not just about having, you know, just a, a group of people trying to make these decisions. And aren't tied necessarily to the specifics of the decisions. What we're really trying to do is get the people involved in the decision-making that are directly tied to those areas. So we met and talked about the Fall Musical, for example. And so we brought in Andy and we brought in Carrie and, and we started talking about if, could we offer, could we continue to offer a Fall Musical? What would that look like? And, you know, what would that entail? And what kind of musical would we offer? You know, it might entail that although the kids get to perform it, it's, it's virtual. And, you know, what does that entail as far as selling it, tickets to watch it virtually and those types of things? So, you know, instead of just, you know, having a group of people that aren't tied directly to the Fall Musical, making that decision. We're, we're trying to bring people in on those things. So it's the same thing as it relates to choir and band, you know, bringing in music teachers to talk about what are the different considerations? You know, they're the ones brainstorming, saying, you know, hey, for our really large ensembles, maybe we're not meeting every day. And so we're splitting that into much smaller groups so we can socially distance. And those larger ensembles don't meet every day. They might meet together only maybe once a week or once every two weeks. In a large enough space that could accommodate what we need to accommodate. And so, um, it really is about thinking outside the box to try to create as many opportunities as we can for kids as we work through this whole thing.
All right. And the last slide that we have that is part of, uh, you know, that isn't to be determined later, and that is, uh, the Community Education Later Fitness Center. Is that you, Tracy?
That's me. Um, so with our community ed program, we serve about a thousand to fifteen hundred, um, children and adults each season. So we do have a significant amount of folks who participate in those enrichment classes or for our, our. So we do have a significant amount of folks who participate in those enrichment classes or for our, our adults. Um, so either engagement classes or, um, physical health classes. So we are planning to move ahead. We are also planning right now some support for our instructors in case they need to move their class to a virtual setting. Um, also planning to do some classes for our adult learners on how to use Zoom and Google so that they feel more comfortable when we, if we have to move to a virtual setting with our classes. So all of that's in the works right now with, uh, community ed, uh, folks as we plan our, our fall schedule. And then with the Raider Fitness Center, we opened the fitness center. We, our participation numbers are similar to where we were last summer at this time. It's gonna take a while to build that back up again. But people are happy to have it open and things are functioning well. We're able to keep up with the cleaning expectations that we laid out. So, um, for both of these, our community ed classes and the Raider Fitness Center, we continue to remain open as long as public health and the board allows us to keep operating.
Questions about the community ed or the fitness center?
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Uh, Tracy, when school is back in session, do you foresee a problem, uh, for custodians to be able to clean those areas? Or will that not present a problem?
It shouldn't present a problem. Uh, the fitness center staff really take care of quite a bit of the cleaning during their shifts. So they have a full cleaning schedule that they're expected to complete each shift.
I'm sorry, with the community education?
With the community education classes, um, no. Most of our community education classes are not, you know, real large classes. So again, we would expect the instructors to be following, uh, the same kind of protocols that our other instructors follow. So, no, I don't, I don't think that it would pose, um, additional stress on the facility's folks, any different than what they're doing as we look to the fall anyway.
Yes, Bob. Um, gyms are rated as a hotspot for virus transmission. Is there, are we following DPI guidelines, state guidelines, or?
We, we're, we're continuing, like, right now, we're continuing to schedule the gym based on St. Crye County Public Health and what their guidelines are as far as number of people inside a space or inside. So, um, with a gym, um, given that space, it's 10 people per court. So that's what we're doing with all of our inside spaces at this time. If that changes with the county, uh, then we'd adjust.
Thank you.
Right, any other questions on that? And then on the final slide there with, uh, about concerts, large events and field trips. I mean, it's all kind of, uh, to be determined, or do you have more to say about?
Yeah, I think, you know, there, there are additional items that are gonna continue to unfold. There's gonna be a lot more communication that's gonna come out, uh, over the month, uh, of August. So please, please look to the district, um, you know, for the emails that are gonna go out and the communications that are gonna go out. We'll also have things posted on our website. But there, there are a lot of, there are a lot of different moving variables and moving targets and, and, and things that we still have to, you know, address and need. And, uh, you know, we're just, we appreciate everybody taking the time to, you know, stick with us tonight as we go through this plan. Again, this is kind of the high level view of it. I mean, there are a lot of particulars as it relates to logistically, how do we operate, uh, operate, operate, operationalize these, uh, these things, uh, and that's working with staff and, and Dave and his team and, and, and Erin and her team as we work through these things. And so, um, again, this is a high level. I know it's a 26-page document, but, um, we feel, you know, girl has put enough information on there. People have an understanding of the direction we're heading. However, uh, you know, not to the point where people feel like they're getting, you know, too much to consume at once. So we do appreciate any questions or, or anything, and I know you're gonna probably have more discussion. One thing I may recommend is that maybe you look at potentially a five-minute recess for board members to, you know, take a quick break before you get into your discussion because it could be a longer discussion.
I mean, well, I guess let's just gauge that before we, cause go ahead, Sue.
I, I'm just, was going to say that, um, I think that the template that you offered tonight has been a great resource. I, I'm assuming it's going to be offering a lot of answers to the kinds of questions we were receiving as school board members. And, uh, phone calls and texts and those kind of things. So I, I really, I, I, I just think as a template, as a way to kinda have a general way to navigate, this is, uh, very, uh, useful. And I like the word template because it isn't a path, it isn't a roadmap because we, we don't really know exactly our end point. So this gives us lots of little pods of, of approaches, uh, that are all gonna work together. And so I think this was a really great way to lay it out for me.
I think, Sue, I would echo your comment there and agree with that. My thought on this, I mean, we've gone through this document for over two hours. I don't know if we have a lot more discussion here, otherwise it entertain a motion to approve. And, um, with the understanding that the board of the administration is gonna be reporting back in three weeks because we've got certain slides that do say to be determined and, and so forth. This is a plan that's obviously gonna get amended. But I think what the administration is looking for is some type of stamp of approval by the boards that they're moving in a direction that they can start fleshing out the details. I mean, if they're not moving in the right direction, we need to let them know that now, so.
I'm, I'm in the motion to approve the back to school, uh, blueprint as, uh, presented and discussed tonight.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and this is a point. If, if somebody feels that we need, um, lots of discussion, we can go on a break now. Otherwise, I was thinking we'd take the break after the vote, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, in general, I'm, I'm supportive of this. I do still have some concerns with the language around face masks, since I don't know if a modification would work. I mean, in general, I would be much more comfortable with requiring masks indoors, period. You know, the University of Wisconsin system now led on an interim basis by former Republican governor and Secretary of the U.S. Department of Health Services Tommy Thompson has issued on July 9th that they're gonna require masks indoors on, on, in, in all university campuses, period. Um, and I think that, that, that's, um, I, I would be, I would personally be comfortable with us doing that. If we're not gonna go that route, if there's not root for, uh, support for that, I would like to see, I mean, the way that the, the language throughout the, um, document is currently written is that, um, face masks are required. I'm trying to find one of the references. Yeah, that face masks are required. Come on, I'm sorry. So they're required when the physical distancing is not possible. The way that's written, it makes me sound like face masks are the exception, like social distancing. And if social distancing can't happen, then face masks are required. You know, I, I would, I would prefer to see it written like face, face coverings, masks are required, um, you know, indoors, period. An exception may be made when, um, it's determined that full physical distancing is possible. Again, I'm just very concerned about, about, um, face masks being perceived as the thing you do when you're told you need to as opposed to the thing that you do as a default and that the rare exception is likely gonna be that, that physical distancing, distancing is, is possible. I mean, I'm even thinking about like in a classroom where kids' desks are able to be spaced six, seven feet apart. You know, one kid gets up to walk up to the teacher's office and is now within six feet of three other students as she or he is walking to the kid's office. I mean, are we really expecting those kids to announce, hey, I'm putting my mask on because I'm gonna walk up to the teacher's desk now and the other kids to put their masks on? I mean, so I'm, I'm really concerned about having it be a, a thing you do when you're not able to be six feet apart as opposed to the thing you do all the time. And then there will be times that you can remove your masks because you're able to be six feet apart and, and an adult will let you know when that's okay. So I'd be interested in other folks' thoughts on that.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Not to, not to have a long discussion about this, but perhaps that would be part of the, uh, staff instruction that you raise your hand if you have to get up and go talk to the teacher, you put your mask on, everybody else has to put their mask on. But I don't wanna get into a long discussion about that right now. But maybe that, that could be alleviated by.
Okay, well.
Instruction.
Right, and I think that, yeah, that's part of it as, as this gets implemented and how it's used on a daily basis. I mean, kids are gonna get used to it and know that when they are gonna go, you know, from being 10 feet from a person and they're gonna close that gap, that they just have to take the mask and go from here to, you know, put it in over their ear and they'll, they'll get used to that. But to Heather's point, I don't know if this, um, from the administrations, does it change? Like that first sentence, I'm looking at slide eight, face coverings slash masks are required. And if we just insert a semicolon and then the word except when physical distancing is, uh, possible. And then take out the word not.
Or unless, yeah, I mean, that, to me, that makes it sound more like face masks are the default and that there might be an exception when physical distancing is possible. And the other thing we haven't differentiated, and I'm assuming it's intentional, is we haven't differentiated indoors and outdoors.
Yes, I mean, uh, you know, because right now our conversations with public health is outside creates a, uh, less risk. Being outside, fresh air. This is really primarily an indoor related issue. Unless you're gonna have kids, they're gonna be in very close contact outside for extended periods of time. You know, really, as we look at this, um, the University of Wisconsin system can do things that K-12 systems cannot do. Almost everybody that goes to their facilities, with the exception of maybe certain visitors, are adults. Whereas 80% of the people that come in our doors every day are kids. And so we're trying to find some type of a balance between implementing a, a mitigation strategy that we think is effective and works with also making sure that we're trying to be able to do it with, with fidelity. And I think, you know, one of the concerns is, and I think it's a reasonable concern, that, you know, can our kids keep a mask on nonstop all day long? You know, with the exception of maybe a couple of times off. I don't know. We, I mean, nobody's really, nobody's really tried that really for the most part. And so, um, you know, that's the, the rationale behind it is, okay, there, there are gonna be times when kids are gonna be working the desk, similar to what, what Carrie said. It may be that if you wanna get up, you need to raise your hand and, and say, hey, I have a question, can I come up? But I think that's, uh, the rationale behind it is to try to give kids, when possible, a break from the mask. Because it, it's hard enough for the eight of us, nine of us that are in this room right now that are all adults, they constantly have to do.
Yeah, I'm ready for a mask break myself right now, so.
You know, we've been in them for about, about two hours and 45 minutes. You know, think about adding another five hours onto that mask. I know, Bob, you have to wear them all day long and.
So, and a mask. Okay, just asking, if we said the words, so we're face covering slash masks are required indoors, semicolon, except when physical distancing is possible and take out the word not. So that way, it, what we're saying is you have to wear them indoors, except when the physical distancing is possible. And then that way our kindergarten or pre-K and so forth, they can, you know, establish that practice of how you get the physical distancing without needing to have to wear the masks all the time. Is, is that workable?
I'll accept that for now.
So is, is there a motion?
Well, just one, one other final comment. And that's, uh, you mentioned something about a doctor's note, you know, and that people can get out of having a mask if they have a doctor's note. I, I'm afraid there are gonna be a lot of doctor's notes and.
Well, that's why I think the third bullet point where it says, we understand there may be some unique situations related to face coverings. If you have questions, please talk to the school principal.
Well, and I, and I, and I, and I think a lot of companies work through that with face masks, um, because some people feel claustrophobic uh, with their face masks. So they're, you know, are, uh, you know, a shield of some sort or some other workable alternative. But, um, you know, what if you have a hundred kids running around with a doctor's note? And, and other kids are gonna say, well, I'm gonna go get a doctor's note because this is bothering me. And, and it could just perpetuate itself into something that is, is too difficult to control, I think.
Yeah, I was thinking about that Bruce, even related to the rise in anxiety. You know, like, and I think we actually had one parent who talked about their child.
I get it.
Their anxiety. So there could be a whole lot of kids saying, you know what, this is really exacerbating my anxiety. So is anxiety, or, or do, are those the cases where we say, well, then you should really be looking at the in-person?
Well, and that's good, that's, I think, the point. I think, you know, we have alternative means. Um, and I, I, I think we should try and make sure that, you know, if we're gonna have a face mask policy, then we should be enforcing that and not having a, a bunch of out clauses for, for students. Because the out clauses, you know, we have other means of, of educating. So I, I think directionally, or yes, we're going in the right path with this document. I think maybe there's a, a few things just to clean up in that face mask section. If you want direction from the board, I think that's kinda what I've been hearing. Directionally, there might just be a little bit of work to do there to shore that up. But I think we're also all kind of aligning up face mask are something that would be good for our, our students and, uh, our staff.
I, I would agree with that. Um, I, 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 I'm hopeful that the students will have less of a problem with this than we will or the parents will. As you see younger kids with face masks all over out there, um, I hope it will become, you know, the, the constant or the norm instead of the exception as we go through this. I, I do think it should be, um, enforced pretty, pretty strongly. I agree with Bruce that there could be a lot of excuses coming out of, all over the place. But I'm, I think we are, this is a great foundation, guys. This is, uh, I think it shows our flexibility, our willingness to, uh, think through these processes and with the help of the cabinet and Nick. And, and, um, uh, one thing I, I wanna just make sure before we go to our break or take our vote is I don't want any confusion out there with parents thinking that we're looking at three options and we're gonna choose one of the three for this fall. Now, we're choo, we're, we're looking at option one, fullback. There, there will be an option for online learning for those that are not comfortable with it. So there's no, no misunderstanding about that.
Yeah.
Good point, Bob.
I think that's the beauty of it.
You know, and, and I think, you know, uh, obviously we all have been thinking about this a lot because as much as I would like to think if we just go somewhere and read enough, we'll get the right answer, right? I mean, this at some level is, we have to make a judgment call and just thinking personally, and I think this is where a lot of us are landing, there is a chance that we're making a decision that's overkill, right? And that we're, we're putting people through the discomfort of wearing masks unnecessarily. I would rather make that decision than make the decision that results in the sickness and death of a lot of people. So is there a chance that this is overkill? I, I get it, there is. But when I weigh the potential outcomes of this decision, you know, putting people through discomfort of masking versus later saying, oh my goodness, I can't believe we didn't follow the guidance of the CDC and the Department of Health and our local public health. That's what makes me feel comfortable with, with, with strongly supporting the masking recommendation.
Okay, so Sue.
Yeah, just make this quick. You know, one of the things I did today was going near my lawn. But all the time I'm near my lawn, I'm, you know, going through this in my head. And I think, and I don't have a very good, um, metaphor, but I think it's better to have a sort of, um, well-structured, kinda tight, uh, template to begin with because you can always then release the valve a little bit, you know, and, and make adjustments. But to have it too low, like filling up a, a car tire, to have it too low to begin with is not a good place to begin. And, um, our community is looking for a very clear direction from us. I know not everyone's gonna like it totally, but we know from doing the referendum that not everyone is gonna be on board. Now, none of the guideline coming directly from how we do business here is a school board. from how we do business here as a school board, is when we review a policy, a policy that then is followed by rules. And certainly, we have now the template for masks. And I know, because that's where we've been having the largest of questions to us, that our administrative staff can go and have another document, if you will, where you have the fine tuning, like special ed kids. Like, I've been thinking about this, what about kids with hearing aids? Obviously, the thing I have on, it probably doesn't work best. But I know a lot of people wearing the bandanas and other creative ways of protecting faces. So I'm in favor of keeping this just as we got it. If you want to do the colon kind of suggestion Jamie mentioned, I'd, I'd be receptive to that.
Okay, well, I got to hear, is there a proposed amendment then to the motion? The motion would be to approve the language exactly as it is now.
It was. Yeah.
No, I mean, we got to have a, we got to have a motion to amend, you got to have a second, and then you have a vote on it.
Oh, I guess somebody else should make the motion.
So is there a motion?
He said colon. He said colon.
No, not period. Okay, if we're going to, yeah, that was not the change. I said, are required indoors, semicolon, except when physical distancing is possible. That, that's what I had proposed. But if you want to change the motion, then that's fine. Okay, all right. So that's a motion. A second, all in favor of that change, say aye?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed, say nay. All right, the ayes have it. With that change, then, we go back to the main motion. Is there further discussion about other slides that people want changed or anything?
I, I just, I just need some clarity, because at one point, somebody said, even for medical-related reasons, we were going to make those kids go to virtual. Is that what I was hearing you say? Because that's.
I, so I, I mean, I, I, I recognize there are some medical conditions. But, but I think there, we have to have some, some strong language around finding a suitable option. You know, because I, I think just to say, I mean, we could have all kinds of medical conditions popping up that it's like, well, is this one covered or not? You know what I'm saying? I think, I think there are certainly legitimate medical issues. But, but most companies today, even are, are, are putting policies in place that you have to find a, a suitable shield, a mask, something, you know? And I, and I think that we need to make sure that we're, we're looking for suitable alternatives that, that act as such of a mask or a shield for, for, you know, as, as many medical conditions as we can. Otherwise, I think it, we're going to have a, we're going to have a very difficult time managing that.
Excuse me, what about if we have some trust in our medical providers that, first, that they wouldn't be just writing this off for any reason, but also that they would try to help the families find, find reasonable accommodations to, whether it's a shield or a gator or, you know, the crewing gators, something that could, could still offer protection to the rest of the class. And then in those instances, if it doesn't become an extreme number, that, that child would have to be as distanced as possible in the classroom.
I, I think we ought to be, we have to be careful. We, we don't want to segregate kids based on whether they wear a mask or don't wear a mask, because we could really get ourselves into some legal challenges there. I think the other component, and I would agree with Kerry, with Kerry, I mean, there, there comes a point where we would have an expectation that doctors follow their ethics and are only saying kids don't have to wear masks if they truly have medical condition. Do we know that, that people may abuse that? You know, absolutely. But unless you're going to say, in order to be in our buildings, you have to have a mask on, otherwise you've got to be in our virtual setting, it's, it's going to be really hard for us to say, well, this doctor, for this medical thing, yes, that's legit, you don't have to wear a mask. But this doctor over here that said they couldn't wear it for this medical thing, I'm sorry, you have to wear a mask. We don't.
Well, so would it be crazy to, to, would it be, that's not what you're supposed to say, would it be, would it be ridiculous to think that we would go that route? I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, so we have an online, we have an online option for students who won't or can't wear masks. We've already talked about how the masks are not about protecting the student as much as they're protecting others. So i- is it fair to others if even with a medical condition, we're saying, if you have a medical condition, we'll let you come to school without a mask? If we have an alternative. I mean, right now, the way it's written in here, it doesn't say, you know, it says, we understand there may be some unique situations. If you have questions, please talk to your child's school principal. It doesn't say, and if you have a medical condition, we'll let you attend in-person school without a mask. You know, so I think.
No, and, and, and I think, you know, that's where we can come back to the board in three weeks and give you a detailed mask policy.
Yeah, that's great.
That's all we're saying.
And say, is this, is this what you want to do? And then you guys can approve that and say, yep, that's what we want you to follow.
I mean, we may, we may find that our mask policy is very lenient with everyone around us, what they determine in the next couple of weeks. And I, you know, I.
Yeah. I, I think just directionally, you have, you have what you need.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the reopening schools plan with the, the amendment that has already passed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the plan is approved. It's now 8:28. We'll reconvene at 8:35 and resume the agenda then. We're just going to go with the microphones and not the Zoom now. So I, all right. So we have our agenda up and we have, let's see, seven or eight discussion items before we go to action items. So first up is the equity discussion. Nick?
Absolutely. Uh, okay, hold on. Here we go. Absolutely. So I, I was just talking with Tim Minor. Disappointed, the, the book that we ordered to start doing the equity discussion, The White Fragility, was supposed to be in today, it didn't get delivered today. So I was hoping to be able to give that to all of you. I ordered enough copies for the entire board and the cabinet team, that we look, kind of follow that same protocol, discussion protocol that we had as we did board governance and, and things like that about a year ago. You know, one of the questions that has come up in just, you know, the conversations related to the equity work and, you know, when I originally said, hey, can I delay it till October, at least a plan of where we want to go, that doesn't mean that we have to delay the conversation about equity until October. And so, you know, it was important to at least let you know that we're, we're planning, as soon as these books come in, I'll make sure that you all get your copies right away. And then I think, you know, based on that, then when we have our meeting coming up in, in about three weeks, we'll be able to have a conversation, not necessarily about the book topics, but say, okay, you know, here's our plan of attack, of how to break out the chapters and kind of our reading schedule and how we want to do that stuff. And also kind of keep everybody updated as to, you know, where we're at in the equity discussions and, and the process of trying to get a plan ready to send towards the board by, by October. So I don't want people to think that it's, it's, it's lost any steam at all. It's just, it's trying to balance getting schools open and, you know, continuing to keep that on a front burner as we, as we continue to, continue to work through that. So.
Um, do we know as far as the table of contents on that, like Fragility, The White Fragility book, like, how much we would try to get a portion of it read for August 24th, our next work session?
Um, you know, I'll be able to send, I'll be able to send out an email and let you guys know once we get that up and, up and going.
All right, very good.
Nick, the one question I, I have is, I know there's a group that's already started meeting in Hudson, and they're meeting to come up with a plan for the district around equity. And so I did reach out and suggested to one of them that this might be a bit cart before the horse. So we're going to chat a little bit, but is there a way for us to more proactively engage them? Because obviously, they're really interested in, I mean, we had talked about part of the plan being, you know, having an advisory committee that would work with us on some of that work. And is there a way that we can try to not duplicate that work and leverage some of that energy sooner rather than later?
Yeah, I, I, I think so. You know, and, and reach out, we can reach out to the group, I, you know, and you can give me. and you can give me some contact information as to who it is and who wants to be a part of it. We've had, I've had several people reach out to me saying, hey, they have interest in being a part of the discussion and working through that. And then also wanted to tap some resources, not just from our district, but also, you know, regionally and how we can support that work. But yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think it's, you know, it's better if we're all kind of rowing in the same direction.
Yeah.
And being reasonable that way.
Great. I'll do that. I'll follow up with you, Nick. Great.
But so it's an ongoing discussion and it is something that's coming up. Thanks, Tim. So I just don't want people to think that we're forgetting about it or that it's not a front burner item or anything like that. So.
Right. Any other questions on that? Then moving on to our next item, which is the Certified Staff Handbook?
Can everybody hear me okay?
No, I can't hear you real well.
Is it Andrew or Holly?
It's Holly.
Holly, okay.
Can you hear me better? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I think we can hear you reasonably well.
Alright, I'll try and speak up. So first just talking about the Certified Staff Handbook. We went through and just made the usual updates with dates and then names and contact information for some of our new hires. On the first page, we did update our general non-discrimination notice. We really wanted to make the language consistent with the updated board policy for 11 and then we'll be updating 511 as well. We really wanted to ensure that all protected category classifications were included. So we updated this first page and then we also updated section three, which is on page six, the equal opportunity employment section. And then also just kind of skipping down on page 16 or section 16, page 50 would be towards the end, which talks about the protected class definitions. So in addition to the handbook, we also made changes to our weekend where we post all of our job vacancies to ensure that applicants are aware of our equal employment opportunity policy and making sure that this language was updated there as well. So this can be found in both the Certified Staff Handbook as well as the Support Staff Handbook, which we'll get to next. So a couple of other things that we updated was just making sure that we reflected our updated activity stipend system. That was approved at the, it was last fall after the handbooks were already approved. So we added that, which can be found on page 13. The formatting is a little off right now. So after the handbook is approved, we'll accept the changes and updates and fix all the formatting as well. We'll skip down to page 32. That was kind of the next change. And we talked about sick leave. We really wanted to define the sick leave use along with the definition of immediate family to update what our practice has been, but hasn't been specified in the handbook. So we added on bullet point C there, just information about when a staff member can use sick leave and then also what the definition of immediate family would be. We did want to tighten up the definition of immediate family. And this again has been both the Certified Handbook and the Support Staff Handbook as we wanted it to be a little more practical to include, you know, just really members of the household. Instead of getting into some of some other definitions that we have in the Support Staff Handbook. So we'll talk a little bit about that once we get there. But it really doesn't change anything. People could still take time off if needed underneath FMLA, which does have expanded definition, but without for use of employees sick leave, it should be people in their household. So that was one kind of update and change in pursuant to this agreement policy. We also wanted to be transparent with respect to our layoff language, which is on page 48. Again, this has been our practice, but hasn't been clearly defined in the handbook. So we want to take a look at building in our department first and then go into the performance training and the HSD years of experience. So not a whole lot of substantive changes to the handbook. We did include at the end the FF-CRA notice, which we put in both the Certified and Support Staff Handbook. This already has been sent to staff, but we wanted to make sure we included it in the handbook as well. So again, not a whole lot of substantive changes to the handbook. But are there any questions regarding the changes made and updates made to the Certified Staff Handbook?
Questions? Sue?
I have already sent a note to Andrea and to Nick. I just think the additional tweaking of the anti-discrimination policy, it just makes me feel like we're really respectful of our staff and administration. And I think also not knowing what we knew a year ago, I think that legally it puts us in a really, in a good place as well.
Okay. Any comments about the Certified Staff Handbook? Yes?
So I was curious and I apologize that I didn't ask this prior, but I noticed school nurses was stricken from the definition of Certified Staff. Do we no longer employ school nurses? Are they, are they a different class of employees now?
They're a different class of employees now as we talked about moving them into the 260 contract. We talked about it the last.
Got it. Okay.
Yep. So they move out of the Certified Staff classification.
That makes sense. And then the other thing, and I'm guessing this is on your radar, is just in the final version to make sure and update it with that gender inclusive language, the Heishis, the Heishu there?
Yep. We're going to continue to look at and constantly try to be conscious of that and try to do those things.
Great.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, and then moving on to the Support Staff Handbook, Holly, you already pointed out a couple of changes. Including the discrimination change.
Yep. And we already, I know that you guys already talked too about the layup and furlough language. I wasn't going to go over that. Really, the big, there's three kind of changes to the Support Staff Handbook. Page 26 to be the first one. And we want to update our language regarding notice of retirees for support staff. We had in there April 1st and we'd like to update that to a 60-day notice because some of our Support Staff employees don't necessarily wait until the end of the school year to retire. They may retire at the end of the calendar year. So the April 1st day just didn't make a whole lot of sense when it came to the Support Staff employees. So we'd like to update that. The other thing will be the sick leave, which is in two different sections, section 11 and 12. Again, this is just to really tighten things up. We had in there taking sick leave for brother-in-law, stepbrother-in-law, sister-in-law, grandparent, grandchild, parent-in-law. We really, again, would like to make that immediate family, families in the, sorry, members of the household as part of that immediate family definition. And then the last thing is the bereavement leave. We would just like to remove that immediate family reference to make it less confusing between this and the sick leave, immediate family. No change to what we have been doing or what we've been practicing, just cleaning things up a little bit. Everything else is the same as the Certified Staff Handbook.
Any questions on that? Alright, very good. Then this should be ready for board action at the August 10th meeting.
Thank you, Holly.
You're welcome.
Yep. Thanks, Holly. Next up, we have the 21-22 calendar guidance. I assume this is Dave?
Yes.
Yes, it is. Thank you. So what we want to do tonight is just as we have been for the last couple of years, get some guidance from you in terms of direction for the calendar, things you'd like to see us to take a look at, things you'd like to see us address. Before we get into that, I thought it makes sense to talk a little bit about the history of the calendar, some of the recent changes, just to remind everyone of what we've done most recently. Last year, as we were preparing the calendar for this upcoming 2020-2021 school year, put quite a few relatively significant changes in place. Some of the guidance we received from the board was to do our best to have the year be as compact as possible, not having a lot of extra days off throughout the year. Make sure that we're not kicking into an additional week in the summer. We were able to accomplish that in the upcoming calendar. One of the most significant changes was we eliminated late starts for professional development and added two full days for professional development and then reduced the number of student instruction days from 180 to 178, resulting in the same total number of teacher contract days. Obviously can't report on the effectiveness of that yet as we haven't started the school year, but definitely looking forward to the additional full days of PD. I think teachers very much appreciated reducing those partial days. And we've heard good feedback from the community as well. So that's a quick look at some of the changes that we put into place for this upcoming school year. One of the things we'd like to be able to do is put the ACT dates in. We checked today, they are still not published. So waiting for that. And the other piece is, oh, in general, looking for some guidance in terms of a potential waiver to see if we could start the school year earlier. There's some talk out there that waivers would be more readily available. And I know during our construction season, the one year when we were able to have an earlier start and end our school or end our semester around winter break, it seemed like a very favorable calendar for a lot of reasons. The alignment academically, alignment for vacations and just in generally splitting the year into equal halves. So wondering about your thoughts along those lines. And then the other thing that we thought we should mention, it's often talked about on the periphery when we talk about the calendar, but not necessarily during this conversation. But considering days off throughout the year that to honor certain holidays, the one that often comes up is MLK Junior Day about having, that's a conversation in the community as to why we don't have that off typically. And I thought that would be worthy of conversation today. So questions, comments, or guidance?
Mr. President, so I have a question. How much, how early would we have to start to accomplish that winter break split?
It would be about two weeks earlier than we typically start. So mid-August instead of beginning of September.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. President?
Yes.
David, I'm sorry, you're not talking about starting this school year two weeks earlier?
No, no, looking at the, looking at the following school year, the 2021-2022, which these school years are really hard to say right now.
Thank you.
We don't have a proposed 21-22 calendar yet. That's why you're just here to ask me based on the major changes that were done with the last calendar, right?
Yeah, we, I, you didn't come through, through the mic there.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic up. Apologize. So the 21-22 proposed calendar is something that you'll show us at the next work session after we've given you input?
It would be a while because we, I haven't met with the calendar committee yet. So we're just trying to get some early guidance.
So anybody opposed to attempting to try and get that permission, consent, if you will, from the state to start earlier, try and split it so that winter break and, you know, Christmas Eve marks the end of the first semester. And then I guess what it would do is make it likely that we do be done with school by Memorial Day then? I'd be in favor of that.
Yeah, I wish, I would, is there a way that we can get broader feedback about that? I mean, it's a pretty significant change. I mean, it works nice from a schedule standpoint, but it would be helpful to me to have a sense for how that hits other people. I mean, I suppose people who have traditions, those last two weeks of the summer would just have to over time make new traditions, you know? But, um, because I do think that's a time when families sometimes will travel, but then a lot of sports are back practicing anyway. So I would feel more comfortable, I guess, approving that if we had a sense that the community, that families supported it as well.
Well, I think, yeah, absolutely. So I, you know, I think the thing is if the board at least has interest in looking at it, then we can put together, you know, as part of our feedback, we can survey parents and get a handle on that. But if the board said, hey, we have zero interest in entertaining that, then we wouldn't bother asking those types of questions.
I'm open to exploring that. Yeah.
But yeah, we can get some feedback, folks. And again, we don't quite know what next year is going to bring. You know, if all of a sudden we end up having to be closed again, you know, by middle of the spring, you know, the earlier we can start, it might be the better. And, you know, the thing that made it obviously difficult for parents this year is we were surveying them essentially in, you know, May to make a change for potentially two and a half months from now. So, yeah, just trying to get that information up front.
I appreciate you, Dave, asking the question about MLK Day because it's always been, I mean, I think there's been a lot of conversation around that. Some folks who feel really strongly that we shouldn't have school, others who feel really strongly that yes, we should have school and we should be doing a lot to, you know, wrap our curriculum around that. You know, I think in light of everything that's happened over the past couple of months there too, it would be, I mean, it'd be interesting to hear from the folks who are most passionate about the need to celebrate that holiday. What's their preference? Would they, would they rather that we were in school and really beefing up the delivery that day? Or is it a day that we should be honoring by declaring a holiday from the school calendar?
Yeah, that's exactly, you framed the question perfectly. That's exactly it. I think either way, when we're engaged in our equity conversation, it's a topic worthy of discussion. And I've heard both ways, definitely. I mean, I, what I do know is if we don't, if we decide to not have it as a holiday without school, that we can do a better job, as you described, making sure that the learning experiences of that day are meaningful and significant.
If we got the permission to start before September 1st, one way to try and ameliorate that, you know, too early to start because parents are still vacationing or whatever, is I'd be in favor of getting rid of that Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. You know, then you can start one day later in August. It's already a four-day weekend and, you know, trying to get the semester done before December 24th, it'd just be a thought. But again, back to Heather's point, we do the survey and there's really no support for starting before September 1st. Then, and we're going to have to swing our second, end of first semester into January. Then I don't think it's as big a deal.
I'm in favor of exploring that. I'm a predignant here, is that week, a week of Thanksgiving, the opening week for deer hunting?
Yeah, it is. I mean, you have districts north of here that take the whole week.
So, I mean, that could be an issue.
Where Bruce is from, those districts.
I think the northern districts should send us some of their, some of their deer.
Some of the spoils from the hunt.
We can trade it for baklava.
Right. Was there a third question? You asked about the early start. You asked about MLK Day. I thought there was a third question.
No, just in, just in general holidays and then just general feedback that you may want to offer. And again, we're back on the schedule we'd like to be. This is about the time we'd like to be having this conversation. So then we can bring this to the committee, explore what we need to explore, seek specific feedback from the community if that's appropriate, and then come with a draft, giving everyone plenty of time to adjust their calendar and their plans to the upcoming school calendar. So I appreciate the time. If there's other feedback, I'd be happy to record that.
Alright, but here are none. Alright, I guess we'll move on to then the special education referrals and placements. I guess this would be Erin.
Yep, I'll start it off. And then Fafani Wineserl, who is the Assistant Director of Student Services, is here to present the presentation. So this is our annual special education referrals and placements report. It feels a little refreshing to do something that's an annual thing and not just COVID-related. So Fafani's worked really hard on this presentation and works really closely with our school psychologists who oversee a lot of this work. So with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Perfect. Thanks, Erin, and thanks for getting it started. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Perfect. Thanks Erin, and thanks for um, getting it started. Can you guys all hear me okay? I'm, I've got a new Chromebook on you. Okay, wow. Um, so thanks Erin for, for getting it started. As I was kind of preparing, I'm always a little worried about how to introduce all of it. So she took care of that. Now I can just jump right in. Um, but as we talk about special education and, and these um, evaluations, referrals and evaluations that have happened in this past school year, I am talking about Just those students who are initially identified this year and um, some of the data that we have is A little different because of that closure. And so um, I'll talk about those things as we come up on it. But Um, just a reminder, I kind of went over this last year too, and I had presented this information. But when we Look at special education and that requirement for child find, what we're really referring to is that district's obligation to identify, locate and evaluate All children with disabilities, including students suspected of having a disability, students in private schools, students participating in homeschooling. And then children who are transitioning to us from the birth to three programs um, for various disabilities. So Um, and then we can, that next slide, um, we talk about eligibility, like what does that mean? Any student in our district aged three to twenty-one would be eligible for special education when They meet state criteria, um, and at least one disability area, and they also demonstrate a need for specialized instruction. It, we, who could have a child who has a, a learning disability, but the approaches that we're using in the general classroom and all the strategies that we're supporting them Are enough to get them what they need. They don't need special ed. So that's an important piece of it. Um, and then next, uh, the disability areas, there are eleven. So when we have a child that We're kind of thinking, oh, something's not, doesn't seem to be quite right. It, we can look at these eleven different areas and I'll get into some of those too with some of these next slides. Um, so the first uh, quality indicator that we take a look at is that incidence rate. When we are looking at um, the overall student population that has an IEP, if we've got fourteen Fourteen percent or more than fourteen percent of our student body has an IEP, we start to wonder what's happening. That promising practice edge though would be ten percent. So um, right now then, and our Take a look at our data on our next slide shows us where we've been at um, over time. So nineteen, the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. Um, about thirteen percent of our student um, population has a, has an IEP. We're kind of hanging right around there. Um, that is, we're always striving for that promising practices piece, but this is definitely an acceptable range to be in. Um, our district's RTI committee that we have going, that meets um, a couple of times throughout the year. And then also our new um, Learning Support Services. Dave, I always think I say that wrong, but myself and Jordan, and now we've got Lisa Scolian and Ivy Wheeler as well with that. Um, I'm really excited about the work that we'll be able to do. We might start to see some of this even change a little bit as we start addressing student needs. Um, in more of a holistic kind of whole child kind of way. Um, taking a look at our next slide. Our next indicator is the number of referrals that are coming through. And you know, you're going to have ups and downs, you know, year to year, obviously, things are going to change. But Really, we want to make sure we're staying um, you know, within a twenty percent change, um, plus or minus. And we can see um, from our data on that next slide then that we're pretty much staying in there. Um, if you look at the twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty school year. We only did a hundred and twenty-seven initial referrals compared to last year. We're at a hundred and forty-nine. This is where the data might be a little tiny bit off. Um, you know, closing schools as of March eighteenth. Most of our referrals are done by that point, but there could have been maybe another ten. You know, it's hard to, to really know there, but um, we still would be well within that range. So that's looking really good. Um, our next information we can take a look at is that referral distribution. Just looking at um, where our total number of referrals are at, and then within that, what is our early childhood special education piece? That early childhood special ed is, it's a tricky one because those kiddos don't necessarily have eyes on them. You know, our, our other students are in a classroom where teachers are kind of going, hmm, that's not, you know, typical development. We need to do something with that. So when we look at our early childhood special ed, we're, we're depending on preschool teachers or Parents, doctors, and then we also have our um, preschool screening days. So we always just want to make sure we're, we're staying in range with that. If you look over the past several years, um, our early childhood special ed referrals are, are about fifty percent of our overall um, kind of base. Last year, when I presented this, I think it was Sue that had asked the question about opening, um, starting our four K program. And did that create a bigger demand on our early childhood programming at all? And actually, it looks like that is trending down. Um, seventeen, eighteen was the first year that we had four K. And you see there's field referrals there, field referrals next year were up a little bit. But that to me says that our four K program is really getting in there and meeting the needs of our kiddos At, in that general classroom, giving them those opportunities. So I'm excited to continue to watch that trend. Um, and to, to see where we're still going with that. And then our next um, thing that I was really kind of digging into, this was interesting to me are So all of these referrals that we're doing, what are the identified disabilities that are coming out of that? Um, some of the trends that I was seeing, if you look at the SDD as our significant developmental delay. And that's really only the younger kiddos. Um, those are our kids like Oh, they're, they're not quite meeting developmental milestones, right? But it's not this really big, like, oh, it's this disability yet. Um, We tend to, at that young age, go, everything kind of falls into that category and we don't dig hard enough. So for me to look at this and let's see over the past four years that that has dropped. Um, that's really encouraging. That's telling me that we're digging at what's happening with these students and really starting to narrow down. What do they really need help with? Not just kind of going, oh, it's a big, a big thing. Um, also with our, those speech placements, um, It was climbing there for a couple of years and now this past year you see a, a significant drop off. The speech team has really been having a lot of Intentional conversations around identifying those students with a disability and how can we meet their needs? Do we really need to pull them Out of a classroom and into a speech therapy session, or can we provide those students and those teachers with ideas and ways to help support them? Um, and then the, the one, oh, I'm going to have to go back to him, sorry. The one that does kind of make me scratch my head a little bit is that, is the OHI or the other health impairment. And if you look at that, all of a sudden, for some reason, last last year, we had this huge spike in students that were identified there. Doesn't mean we did anything wrong, but it does for me Push me to say, I'm going to meet with my psychs and let's really dig at what are we doing when we're identifying those students? Are we really making sure That we're providing the right opportunity for them in a classroom, um, and not just inadvertently over identifying because we're not taking that time to dig in. So Um, but I, I look at that, I see some really great trends and then something that we get to keep on working on and making sure we're doing the right stuff. So Okay, now we can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, and then our final quality indicator is that hit rate. Um, this has been a big deal on the psych team for past several years. You know, that, that high level of promising practice would be that we're had, we got about an eighty percent hit rate. Um, that tells us that we're not just referring every child that we're sort of worried about, that we're trying lots of different things. It's a funny balance though too, because there's also that requirement that if you suspect a disability, you're making a referral. Um, so walking like this really fine line on that. Um, and the psychs have really been trying to participate more in that pre-referral bit. Working really hard with our counselors who run these incredible student support team meetings before we even get to a referral. Um, and you can see on our, our data that we're hitting um, this past year. Like over, I, that's really small. I don't know how I made that in that graph, but an over ninety percent hit rate. Now again, we're a little off with our numbers. Um, when we had to kind of close school buildings back in March. Some of those evaluations could not be completed because we really needed to be face-to-face with a kiddo. So I had thirty, so we got about thirty-nine evaluations that we still have to ramp up. You know, even if fifty percent of those all um, qualify, we're still well above an eighty percent hit rate. So And that to me just speaks to these really strong programs, looking at what do students need, that bigger picture. Um, and you know, getting to their, meeting their needs that way. So that's all my Like I could talk forever, you guys, about this data because that's just kind of the stuff I love. But do you guys have any questions at all for me?
Any board questions? It's excellent report. Yep, good to see the trends. Um, yeah, we're making headway in some of these areas, Fafani. So really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Keep up the good work. Thank you for the report.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have the preliminary budget and I think I see Tim Erickson. Is your microphone working, Tim?
All right, there. Now, there we go. All right, so it's another update to, for July. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about nineteen-twenty and where we think we wind, we're winding up there as we continue to close out the year For nineteen-twenty and then talk, just run into twenty-twenty-one for a couple of minutes and talk about, talk about that. So if we scroll down to the, the bottom of that section Versus general fund surplus deficit, that line under, under nineteen-twenty. So when I was a board adaptive budget, we expected to have about a six-hundred-seventy-thousand-dollar surplus. And as we've been talking before, we expected that surplus to be much more than that. And we had given some rough estimates earlier on in the year. And now that we've got most of our numbers in, Um, we think we're going to add about four point, a, a total of four point two, almost four point three million dollars Uh, to the fund balance. And a lot of that uh, was due to health insurance. We talked about usage rates uh, and, and uh, Claims with health insurance. They, you know, obviously those things fell way off um, During, during uh, March, April, May, and then, and we saw a little bit of an increase uh, in June here, but Um, roughly two million dollars less than where we uh, where we had budgeted. And that was a lot, that was certainly due to COVID. Um, when we look at, we had salaries and, and wages came in lower than expected. And then um, the third major area was projects, a lot of the projects that um, we wound up delaying. So Uh, those are the, those are the big three. And then we were under, obviously, in things like supplies and some of the other areas. So We had a lot of, a lot of areas that um, we were under on in the budget, obviously with that, with the shutdown in March. And so if we jump back up to the top, under the twenty-twenty-one preliminary, Um, the property taxes in this, in this update are down about two-hundred-sixty-five thousand dollars. And talked a little bit about that at the last meeting briefly. Um, the July first state aid estimate came out. And um, that one shows us a two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars higher in state aid. So the levy was offset with that in this new budget. And then we looked, we, we dug in a little bit more into some of the other areas of revenue. Investment earnings, we, we adjusted that down. We don't feel we're going to hit, certainly not going to hit uh, that level That we had in uh, this past year. Um, other local revenues, rentals, so facility rentals. Uh, student fees have been pretty conservative there based on where we were last year. And uh, so those are the bigger adjustment areas. If you go down to six line six twenty-one, it's equalization aid. That number is up by two-hundred-sixty-five thousand. So as I mentioned before. And but when you look at that overall equalization aid, that's one of the large, largest numbers in our revenue and it is down overall, down four point one percent. There is a, there is a situation out there with all of the districts that Uh, all of this, most districts will be underspent this year. And So what happens specifically to a district like ours, where a negative, negative tertiary aid. Um, we lose some of that aid during the year, is there is a potential that we could uh, See an increase in aid higher than that July first estimate. But a lot of things have to come together there and It, it's, it's based on, the information has to be updated. The state will update information As far as actual numbers, because all we're doing is working on budgeted numbers statewide at this point Um, for nineteen-twenty. So once all the actual numbers come in, they'll do another run. And then it's specifically which districts underspent, how many, you know, how many were negatively aided districts versus Um, those that received full aid. So um, there is a potential that, that aid number could go up. It, it could also go down a little bit. So um, it's more, certainly a lot more of a wild card right now than it has been in the past. We run down into expenditures. Um, salaries and benefits, again, those are, those are trending down. Um, we had uh, you know, our non-capital objects, those have been decreased a bit. Uh, those are the main areas there. Special ed, we, we have more of those final numbers in, so that one was, was increased a bit as well. So what we get down to is we have a balanced budget again in this scenario. And if we scroll down under the committed and unassigned fund balance summary, uh, then again, it shows that Projected unassigned fund balance at twenty-three million, a little, a little over twenty-three million or twenty-three point six million, so thirty-three point six eight Percent of fund balance expenditures. And again, you know, government and schools are lagging economic indicators. So Um, we think, you know, there's potential certainly to have some significant budget adjustments as we go into the next biennium. There's a potential, as we, as we talked about, went through those other scenarios with a budget repair bill that could happen Twenty-twenty-one year yet. But again, that would have to happen um, probably, uh, probably earlier in October. So we get down to the mill rate. And the twenty-twenty-one mill rate in this scenario is estimated at uh, nine ninety-five. And last year's mill rate was at ten thirty-six. So we've got a decrease of forty-one cents. And it's about a four percent decrease in, in the mill rate. So, okay, so any questions on that?
Yes, Heather.
Tim, can you remind me is, or remind us, maybe just me, that target fund balance is, is it twenty-five to thirty?
Yes, correct, exactly.
Okay, and if, and if I heard you right, that the reason, if someone were to ask, the reason that we're not going to then Roll that amount that's above thirty kind of into this year's budget and further reduce, um, ultimately the mill rate Is that we're thinking, we might be looking at a um, a, a more challenging Budget in the next biennium due to changes in state funding. And so Rather than reduce and have to then drastically raise, that we just kind of Ca- um, conservatively sit on that for a year until, until we see what shakes out at the state level? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Yeah, yeah, it would be, it would be just, actually, yeah, would, this would bridge any gaps. If we have, for example, That the past, past couple of times you've had major situations like the Great Recession, we had Hudson had AIDS cut by uh, ten percent and sometimes a little bit more than that. So That was, you know, two, two and a half million dollars. So this will help bridge a gap like that. Um, and then again, we don't know for sure, but there could be a budget repair bill for this, this year yet. We'd have to react to, to as well. Um, this would position us to weather a storm.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
And if that storm doesn't come in October, I mean, the other thing is we could reassign some of that unassigned balance to capital. Then use the capital projects fund balance.
Right, yeah, we still have, yeah, we still have that ongoing discussion and eventually uh, looking at the All the capital projects across the district again too.
Any further questions then from any board members on that budget update? Thank you, Tim, for the report. And then next is the School Start Terms Committee update.
That'll be Tracy. I'm going to go ahead with that one. So we put out a quick survey to the School Start Time Committee members. And asking them about, um, are they still interested in being involved in the committee? Are they Um, wanting us to continue our work this school year? And then just some questions about how do they want to meet, whether in person or um, virtually. And um, overwhelmingly, folks say they want to continue the work this year. Um, though they think we
Yep.
Yeah, you're really cutting in and out. I don't know if you can talk more directly into the directional mic if that'll help.
Okay.
Catch what you said there.
Sorry. Um, so is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so the group overwhelmingly supported continuing to meet this year, but Perhaps waiting a bit, not starting right away in September, so that everybody is settled in with whatever. so that everybody is settled in with whatever the new format of learning is this fall, and so then to come back together um, in late fall or in January.
So we we still have a couple of months then.
Correct, yep. Um, it it doesn't look like anybody's eager to start right now or even beginning of September. It's just, can we get started with the school year and then start meeting again at that point?
Questions, yes, Sue.
Yeah, so Tracy, do you still have a pretty strong cat cadre of people that want to be be involved?
Yes.
Okay.
We only had two of, two of the respondents came back to say that they were not interested in continuing to participate. Um, the one group that we're gonna have to reconnect with, um, once we're back in school, are our students because we had a significant number of seniors that were, um, included in that group. So we'll have to figure that one out, but they'll catch up quickly.
Those students were quite vocal, as I recall.
They were a great group of kids.
All right, thanks for the update, Tracy. All right, next up, we have action item. It's the, um, personnel hires, changes, um, I didn't see any retirements, but we had some resignations there, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Move for the approval of personal hires, changes, retirements, resignations, now renewals, terminations, and reasons for those.
We have motion to second. Is there any explanation needed, Hall?
No, no explanation.
All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it and motion carries. Uh, last up is extension of the superintendent contract that was circulated multiple times by myself and, uh, everyone should have had, uh, opportunity to read it, extends, uh, the superintendent through, uh, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Move for the approval of, uh, the superintendent contract extension?
Your second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed?
Um, me.
All right, the ayes have it. It's approved. Last unmade is the adjournment. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.